C2.
Can we have more of this?
Right. Not on tonight's agenda.
It is.
No, more of this.
Okay.
It'll have to be on next week's. Item C3. Moving to the consent agenda, item 4.
I had just a quick question about Ford. This is just the garage without the main building. Yes, no, without the swing. This is.
Actually, let me ask Chris Quater that question. Because I think it's an alternate.
I can answer that. It's the garage, the support building, and the site work. It does not have the wrap around the garage. We're keeping our powder dry on that until the last bid package bids. And we'll come back in April and we'll have either enough money to buy that or we won't. But right now, we have two solid competitors for that wrap. And we are keeping them on the line until that last bid package bids. But I'm pleased to report that we came in under budget on that package. So, you know, we're headed in a good direction.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any questions on item E4? Item 5? Item 6? Item 7?
I had a question about 7. So with the positions that are listed here, is that all of the positions? Because I know that we approved previously.
These are just additional overfilling positions.
So this is in addition to what was approved in '06?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. This is so in working with legal, she was saying we needed to get this re-approved every year. Normally, it'll come with your budget from now on. But we're doing it because we didn't have a budget this year.
Okay.
Plus, we didn't have authority to do the fire firefighters' overfill. And so we're adding that to this.
So I guess I misunderstood the what was approved in '06 and 2010. That doesn't roll over.
She, I think the decision was that it needed to be done every year.
So I'm confused. I'm sorry, I didn't catch you off this time.
But it's going to be overfilled for like that long.
I mean, I was just curious if this was inclusive of all the other stuff that we kind of had set aside before? Or if this is just.
When you're saying inclusive, I'm not following what you're asking. Inclusive of what we set aside before?
Is this stuff that we're, we have a list that was already approved? Are we adding to the list all of this? Or is this now the list?
This is now the list.
Okay.
So the only thing we're adding to what was. So basically, you had authorized us with the police dispatch jailers prior to this. And now we're adding firefighters. But every year, we will just get this re-approved. But this is the total number of overfilled positions.
Okay. That answers my question.
Yeah, I was gonna, that was the same question I had. Thank you very much.
You good? Item 8?
Do we have to have this by six?
We could just have you as a holdover.
Someone's going to be abstaining.
I don't have to abstain.
Item 8. Item 9? Item 10? Item 11? Do we have somebody in mind for that? We have Mr. Odenklaack. Oh, that's right. Yeah, you're right. Sorry. Excited. I think he'd be a great voice on there. Item 12?
Who wants to do that?
We've got Kelly Rouse lined up for that. We don't have anything for closed session, City Manager?
We do.
So, super. That is it for the regular agenda consent agenda. Going to move to workshop, item B. Update on the establishment of Park Alliance.
You know, it took a lot for you to say that. We're Mayor, Councilmember. Our fans, Stacy and I, with the Parks and Recreation Department. Just to give you a quick history on how we got here, just for those of y'all who have just joined the council. Back in 2019, Councilmember Daniels had a couple of pitches. And one of them involved forming a nonprofit to support parks and recreation initiatives. With the idea that keep Louisville beautiful also needed to be supported to make sure that we prevented competition for volunteers and resources. And also with the KLB side, you know, they were looking at some loss of financial support. How do we make sure that both areas are are supported? So we started out on that. And that initiative was voted on by city council and said, let's roll with it. So we put some funding in subsequent fiscal years to help us get there. And we began conversations with KLB on it. We joined the National Association of Park Foundations. And we attended Park Foundation School in August of 2021. And one of the things that we learned there is don't call it a park foundation. If it's a park foundation, people think you give away money. So let's go somewhere else because we want to take them. Or we want to get some money from people to do things. And that our initial board should be very, very small so we could be nimble in its creation. And that the KLB executive director cannot serve as the executive director of both organizations. It just wouldn't work in long-term growth. And that we did need just a separate organization to support parks. But that once that's established, there probably is a really good opportunity. Have a pretty strong triad of park-related and public realm-related organizations to support our types of efforts. Through KLB, the Park Alliance, but also with the Friends of Lila, helping stand them up so that we can can get moving on some of those initiatives. So, once we came out of there, we started rolling with a separate agreement for KLB. And established that in 2022. And that set up some long-term funding with pass-through funding with one of our. Landfills. Sorry. There are pass-through money there. And that we would encourage them to establish a separate MOU with the Alliance once started. So that they wouldn't be stepping at each other with the types of funding that they're pursuing. But also, you know, leveraging the use of volunteers. And we started working on Park Alliance being a standalone entity. And KLB has really been helping us on administrative support side. They've helped us with identifying the CPA to help with that kind of thing. And having a continued focus on significant projects and scholarship support for the Park Alliance that wouldn't step on those small things that KLB is working on. We hired a consultant to help us navigate how this would go, to set up this separate thing and support the Parks and Recreation Department and how that would be productive. And then that we would eventually get to the point where we have a standalone agreement with the city once the group is established and they file 501(c)(3) documents. So, what we've been doing since July of 2022, the support of PRS, is we've been working with our initial board. And Kelly, Cindy, John, Rizwan, and Alex have been spending at least once or twice a month getting together, spending two hours a week, putting together, filing all the formation documents with the city secretary's office or the Secretary of State's offices, coming up with a name for the group, establishing a vision, setting up some initial basic bylaws and policies and procedures, and developing a template for their financial plan. And I'm going to hand this over to Cindy right now because she's going to talk a little bit about what they've come up with so far for the organization.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, council, and all city representatives for letting us present this to you this evening. I'm a little down, so I'll try to get as loud as I can and get it out to you guys. First off, our mission. Our mission, the Louisville Park Alliance exists to promote, protect, and enhance the parks and recreation system of the city of Louisville through education, resource development, and community partnerships. The organization and board structure will be. The board members will consist of the Chair, Vice Chair, Treasurer, and Secretary. We'll have ex-officios, which will be Director of Parks and Recreation, and one current Park Board member. Our supporters are going to be Louisville Park Alliance fans, all Park fans, anybody, come on, let's go. And to actually get this going, the recruitment strategy for this will be utilize the existing boards to pull from as members fall off due to their expired terms. Go to the Chamber of Commerce for business contacts, Friends of Lila, KLB. Consider the Rotarians and other service organizations that have worked with the department before. We're looking for folks for volunteer or financial support at all levels. To achieve this, we will hold membership drives and promote at city events and recreation facilities. Our primary focus will be key projects that support the Parks and Recreation Department. For example, the next big one, Vista Ridge Development. Next is the program support, the scholarship programs for memberships that like Thrive, Lila, Haring, and so on. Finally, our next steps for the Alliance. File for nonprofit status. We're currently working with the CPA and that's happening very soon. MOU with the city. Seek long-term Louisville Park Alliance Board. Develop fundraising strategies once the board is in place. Finally, if you guys have any suggestions for people who might fit this need for us, please either send the information to Stacy or myself. Thank you again for your time.
All right, thanks, Cindy. So, as you can see, they've been working towards some pretty lofty goals and it formed a good basis to look, to work from. So our next step was, as Cindy said, they're filing their 501(c)(3) status documents and start working on an agreement with the city of Louisville. That will be contingent upon receiving that designation, but will be very similar to the KLB agreement. A couple of reasons it's already made, you know, we're used to it. Our legal departments helped write that. The group that is feels pretty confident about that type of agreement. And so what will happen will, similar to what we have with KLB, is that LPA will be, you know, on the fundraising and event planning coordination. They'll help us with letters of support for city grants that we might need. And vice versa, if there's something that a 501(c)(3) can apply for and we can't, they'll go after it. And supporting the mission of the department. They're not going to drive projects. The Healthy Infrastructure Plan will say, hey, here's what the project is. And we'll, through what are our available resources, be able to say, hey, here's where our gaps are in being able to get there. Can we, can you help us? So we'll be doing all the project planning and approval. Well, just like with KLB, once we got the agreement done, we'll have city space available and booth space, maybe using Thrive or other assets for fundraising events. And then have ex-officio representatives from the staff and the Park Board. And so that's where we are right now on that. It's getting to the point where we start drafting that agreement to be ready to go and come before you once they have that 501(c)(3) designation. So they're going to start recruiting their board members. Hopefully, they'll have board members in place by late spring and begin creating that strategic plan for their fundraising. And we're targeting May to come. With that agreement to city council, it might be that we have it approved in May, ready to go contingent upon their 501(c)(3) designation. Because there's a little bit of, we don't know how long that will take. It should be about six months at the most. And then in 2024, you know, we together walk our march towards world domination by creating parks and pool spaces, right?
Or somebody making pools.
That's right. Do you have any questions? C3 and Park Man, there you go.
I do, we have Cindy, Rizwan, and Alex are here. So I want to thank you all.
John.
Is John behind me? There he is.
I don't know if Kelly's here.
I haven't seen Kelly. So I got to see Kelly on Wednesday, so I'll make her that. But I want to thank you all for the time invested and getting this off to a great start. I'm really excited about what the opportunities will bring from it. And thanks to Councilmember Brent Daniels for kicking this off. I'm sure he'd be very proud of us doing that. Thank you. I love how the jacket matches the slides, by the way. All right. Item C, discussion of current special events and potential changes. We do have our Director of Community Relations and Tourism, Mr. James Kuckey, presenting.
Because this is probably going to go to the end, you don't want to do introductions.
Oh, we do have, we have a couple of new employees. I'm going to let staff do them.
Stacy, go first and then Chief.
So, one of the things well-approved in our FY23 budget was the creation of Assistant Director position for the Parks and Recreation Department. And Marcus Gallegos has joined our team as a chairman of Parks and Recreation. He most recently comes from the Fort Worth Parks and Recreation Department and has been involved in their CAPRA accreditation. Has a strong background in both athletics and facility maintenance. So we're really excited about him joining the team and helping with this world domination thing. You'll see him around.
Welcome, Marcus. Thank you.
I have our new emergency management coordinator for the city. This is Russell Marshall.
Hello, everyone.
He's very quiet and hard to hear.
I was just picking up on that.
Russell put in a full career in the Longview Fire Department. Worked for TDM, worked with Josh Roberts for a while. So he learned some manners from him. And then finished his career, he worked in Athens as fire chief for, most recently, until he came.
Welcome, Russell.
Thank you. I got here as quick as I could, Mark.
I appreciate that. Taking it up a notch. I love it. All right. Let's go ahead and move into the special events. Mr. Kuckey?
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody laugh when Stacy talks about world domination, she's not joking. So, we're going to talk a little bit this evening, Mayor and Council, about special events. Really with a focus on where we are now and this coming year. Because there's some challenges, some opportunities we want to share with council. We'll do a quick overview of our special events program as a whole. Spend a few minutes just briefly highlighting each of our major city-run events. And then to the end, we do have some forward-looking items for you. So just to recap here, we have two primary purposes for our citywide festivals and concerts. We don't have citywide festivals and concerts. We mean those that really are designed to appeal beyond our boundaries, not just for Louisville residents. We want to bring people in from outside. So we look first off for opportunities for our residents. Always our number one priority. Give them opportunities for culture and exposure and recreation. But also create that draw for non-Louisville residents. In particular, since you'll see in a minute, most of our events are funded through the hotel tax. We want to try and keep an eye on events that have the potential of putting people in hotel rooms in Louisville. When they're held in Old Town, you have that additional purpose of trying to develop an entertainment district here in Old Town. It's been an objective for the council for a while. And trying to bring in traffic into this district. So what's here, they might not spend a whole lot of money and time when they're here for an event, but they're exposed to Old Town and hopefully that encourages them to come back when they have more free time. Just as an idea, over the past 12 months, we have 50,000 people attend our city-run special events. That's a great number. 2019 was better. We had about 65,000. That included two special one-time events, the Pop Fest and the Wal that Heels. And 2019 was just a record year for our events. We're really close to that. You'll see that in a minute. So here's our calendar of events. You'll see we skipped January, February. It's just too cold and often rainy or icy. We skip August because we don't want to die in the heat. We had an event in November. We took it off just because of budget and because of demand for the event. But it is an open window for us. And then through the spring and summer, and then into the early fall, we have a lot of events throughout the year. We try not to have four or five events all in one month because staffing levels would really preclude our bail to do that in most cases. This is our attendance. And you'll see 2019's a record year of 63,000. And that does not include those two one-time events I talked about. But this past year, 55,000. So very comparable number. Differences here, Western Days was a record number of 30,000 that year. That's the first time we've broken 30,000. And then we had some really high numbers for Stroll with 6,000. And Sounds of Louisville, that year, we had eight concerts plus the fourth. Depends on how the calendar falls in June, July. And the weather was absolutely perfect. We averaged more than 1,000 people per night during June and July of 2019 because the weather was not even over 100. It was usually in the 80s or low 90s by the time the concert started. And in Texas, we can handle that. By comparison, this year was 4,100. We had seven dates instead of eight. And it was 100 degrees plus for four of those dates. And one of them, it was so high, we had to actually cancel the event. So weather always a factor. But still, 55,000 with a record-high number for Color Palooza and for Fiesta Chara. So we feel like the numbers were pretty strong and in general, going in a good direction coming out of the pandemic.
Something else real quick?
Yes.
I also noticed in here that there's three events that we don't do anymore that account for about 4,500 people, so.
That is the biggest difference between those two. Thank you, Councilman. I forgot to point that out. We did retire three events after 2019 and in the pandemic. And we'll talk about those in more detail on another slide. But yes, three events went away. And if you add those numbers up, you have 2,000 and 1,000 and 1,500. So that's most of that gap, a big chunk of it. Budget, we have $1.2 million in our budget for citywide special events. Sounds like a really big number. You'll see in a minute, it's not as big as it sounds, but it's not small. It's a good amount. Most of that, General Fund has 59,000 of that. That's not much of the budget. And that's deliberate. We really want to keep our special events funding mostly in the hotel fund, where you see $850,000, and the Community Activities Fund. We want to do it that way because really, property tax, sales tax, those ideally are used for base municipal services. And while there is some basic municipal service in terms of providing a high quality of life, frankly, I don't want to compete with streets and fire and police to try and get my event funding. But hotel fund by state law is restricted to tourism uses. And tourism uses include festivals, events, concerts that are designed to draw people from out of town. This is why, by the way, most of our marketing and advertising for special events, you never see. Because you're in Louisville, you're not a tourist. It's mostly in other markets, other parts of the metroplex, all the way up to Oklahoma, Tulsa, Oklahoma City. A lot of marketing there. You don't see it here because this is, we don't get tourists from Louisville. We get residents in Louisville. Community Activities Fund, that's where event revenue and sponsorship comes in. So Western Days ticket sales, vendors fees for all of our events, any of those revenue-driven items. And also sponsors that we get either through economic development agreements or direct sponsors to the festivals. $300,000, which is a really good number. And all of that goes into Western Days. And then Risk Fund, that's just for rain insurance for Western Days. We do rain insurance for the main stage acts. Because those acts now are generally $100,000 or more. And if they rain out, we take, pardon the pun, a bath. Because we had no revenue, but we spent the money. So we ensure the main stage entertainment. In case there is a weather incident that cancels those, we get recovery on that money. And it's happened once in the past five years.
Old Ninety-Sevenths.
Yes.
Still about that.
Absolutely. If you might remember, a couple of years before that, we didn't have insurance. And so we tried to squeeze Josh Abbott into the Performance Hall of the Grand Theater. And it was a great show, but controlling that crowd was a very difficult challenge for us. And then also, it does include security for the main stage for the performers. Western Days, of course, the biggest budget. And you'll see in just a minute the numbers in comparison. And we have three full-time staff members. Darren Watt comes back here, is our specially missed coordinator. He's the one running around in the floppy hat at all of our events, clicking things and directing things. I mean, it's amazing the work that he does. And then Jamie Milstead and Shelley Pershing are especially, special events specialists. And so they're so good, they get special in their name twice. So here's our event budget. Again, you'll see, as I said, most of it is out of hotel fund. General Fund, historically, we've used it just for fireworks. Because the Attorney General has ruled that fireworks are not a tourism draw because there's fireworks all over the place. People don't usually stay overnight, go to a hotel just to watch fireworks. We also had a little bit of our holiday stroll stuff in there. Because holiday stroll is more than 60% Louisville residents. It's hard to make a tourism argument with holiday stroll. We've increased in this over the past couple of years because, and you'll see this a little bit, as the cost of events has gone up and as the logistic needs have gone up, it has placed huge staff demands, especially on parks and public services. Not just them, police and fire are out there doing all kinds of stuff as well. But these two departments in the past couple of years have had some struggles filling some positions. And we're coming to them looking for more and more help at times when they're having trouble just getting their base work done. So we have budgeted money in the General Fund, because those are base, you know, core municipal services. We have budgeted money in the General Fund to cover some of those, such as some cleanup crews and street sweepers and things like that. But most of it's still hotel fund. There's the Activities Fund I talked about, the Risk Fund. Here's your totals, $1.2 million. And the most of it is $750,000 for Western Days.
I also wanted to point out that, so staff overtime is not included in that $1.2 million. So that's in addition to that.
Absolutely correct. It doesn't include any staff positions for us. But also, if Stacy has people out there working overtime at an event, that is not a part of the number you just saw. If we pay an outside company to do it, it is. But if she's paying out of her budget, that's separate. We've quantified that a few times. And it's, it can be a pretty significant number, looking at all the departments, all the overtime. But they have historically tried to absorb that into their budgets. This is just to show you that we do have an eye toward inclusivity in our events. You know, our main event is Western Days. Western by nature, a lot of country and Western music. We have four live stages at Western Days, and two of them are just country music. We added a non-country stage, the BIM stage. It has rock and blues and things like that. But if you look just at Western Days, we had a lot of country music, which you have a certain demographic appeals to. But you look at all the other events, and we really don't have that, that type of bias or that type of trend in our musicians. 72 paid bands in 22. Forty-eight of them were fronted by a women or minority center was the front for that band. And this came out of the Listen, Learn, Lead Commission. But I'll tell you, we already were trying to do this beforehand. They just formalized it and said, we think you should hit 30%. This past year, we hit 72%. So we've made that happen. Challenges. These are challenges common to all of our events, every event we have. Budget is a problem, can be a challenge for us. Because if it's coming out of hotel fund, that is a limited fund. We can't just go out and suddenly create more hotel fund money. Plus, as we saw in 2020, if something really, really bad happens, that money disappears in a hurry. So it's a little bit volatile. Generally, pretty good. It's going in the right direction, but we always keep an eye on that. Staffing, I mentioned it previously. Our departments are putting a whole lot of support. And these events cannot happen without those departments. Police, fire, public services, parks, neighborhood services doing the inspections. Pretty much every department's involved in it. And without them, there's no way we can do these big events. Little concerts, maybe. Western Days, doesn't happen. So that's an issue. We ought to make sure when we do events that we keep in mind the impact on those departments and try to mitigate it as best we can. Venues can be a challenge also. Old Town parking during an event can be challenging. Traffic can be challenging. Plus, as more development comes into the Old Town area, which is a good thing, we all want it, it takes away event space. So the footprint for Western Days has changed every single year for the past 10 years. We add spaces, we take away spaces, trying to accommodate the event, but also accommodate the wonderful growth in Old Town. Lake Park can be a great venue for events, but all traffic in and out of the park goes through one stop sign intersection. So if it's a big event, it is a very big challenge getting people in and out of that park. Plus, the best times to have events are the times when Lake Park is already full. And we're not going to just clear people out in order to come and have a concert, because that would be very ugly. Bill Weaver Arena, very nice facility. We've done some work there. We're giving the light poles installed pretty soon. It also has some parking issues, and it's directly across the street from Residential. And then Lake Avalon Park out in Castle Hills could lay out very nicely for smaller events. But again, parking, there's not a whole lot of parking directly available. You don't want to take up all of the shops parking if you can avoid it. And they have a lot of residential on two sides of the park that their only access is on the street that is fronted by the park. So if you close down those roads, you close down people's access to their homes. And then weather, as I mentioned. People will come out for drizzle. They'll come out for heat when it's below 102. They'll do 100, 102, no, 105, definitely not. Heavy rain will wash out an event every time. And then we have a very competitive market. There are dozens of public festivals in North Texas. And there are about a dozen of them that are three days or longer that are the big hitters. And we're not in that group right now. Western Days is not in the big hitter group. Talking Main Street Days, Grape Fest, Plano Balloon, Wildflower, Main Street Arts in Fort Worth. And there's a batch of them, you've heard of them. And we're competing with them. Even against the smaller events, we compete. And that's why we try to find times when maybe there's not a festival directly adjacent to us, but we can have it. When there's multi-day events being held simultaneously, people have to choose. And that's a very tough, tough market. So here's some highlights, very quickly. And I'm going to run through these in a hurry. But please, if you have questions, I'll pause long enough for you to ask those questions. St. Patty's Day started in 2017. This is a combination of St. Patrick's Day and Texas Independence Day. The first year, it was supposed to be two events. Texas Independence Day rained out, so we put them all on St. Patty's Day. And it worked out so well, we just said, let's just do that. That's the easy path. Started in 2017. This year was held on March 19th. We had 2,800 people in attendance. That's our best crowd to date. It is growing nicely every year. Spent 32,000 on it. Next year's date, just for reference, is March 18th. March eighteenth. And we held it Saturday evening closest to St. Patrick's Day. Color Palooza, this one started in 2015, although in 2013, we brought Chalk This Way from the Colony here. Christy Martin's Events, she's looking for a new location. We brought it in. Two years later, we absorbed it into a brand-new event called Color Palooza, our spring, our spring festival. It is held in the Wayne Ferguson Plaza also. Last year, eighty-one thousand dollars, forty-five hundred people, which is the highest number we've recorded. There was a year early on that might have been hired, but we didn't have a good counting system, so I don't trust that number. And you see there, we also get, it's a celebration of colors. And Color Palooza, that's color of art, colors of nature, and colors of culture. So we bring in the dance stage for that and do some cultural recognition as well. Fiesta Chara, started in 2018. It's held at Bill Weaver Arena. This is a one-day event. We actually pay a company to come in and do most of the work for us, and we provide some logistic support. It's one of those events that, that you'll see, well, you saw on the charter, the little asterisk mint. We don't actually run everything, but we are, are very involved. Fifty-eight thousand dollar budget, twenty-four hundred attendance. Attendance is kind of limited by Bill Weaver Arena. The arena can hold about twenty-one hundred if they really, really like each other. So twenty-five is the attendance there. It can get bigger, but as it gets bigger, it's going to have a lot of rotation and moving around. And the audience, the first couple of years was largely Latino. It was almost exclusively Latino the first year. This past year, what we're seeing is that Latino audience is really stable, but we're adding a non-Latino audience. It's starting to grow beyond those boundaries. So that's very nice, have that blend, have people exposed to cultures that they didn't grow up with. Sounds of Louisville, I think I've seen most of you out of Sounds of Louisville, maybe all of you out of Sounds of Louisville. Started in nineteen ninety-one. We hold it on Tuesday nights in June and July. Tuesdays were chosen in talking with hoteliers. And they looked at the days of the week, and they said, that's the week that we think you'll get the best because business people have arrived. They're looking for something to do. Families might stay over one extra day if there's something to do. They said on the weekends, they've got things going on. They don't need anything. But on Tuesday nights, they felt like that was the best time. So we put it on Tuesday nights. And we get good crowds. Well, during the summer, so there's no school the next day. You've heard the attendance numbers already. There will be eight dates next year again, plus Red, White, and Louisville separate from that. And this moved around a bit. It started in the amphitheater, then it moved to North Poitras Plaza, then to the courtyard of the grand, and now it's got this wonderful home in Wayne Ferguson Plaza. Sounds of Red, White, and Louisville. You might recall, there was the fireworks festival. It's the fireworks show that started in about nineteen ninety-one. We're not certain of that, but it started right after the mall opened. So nineteen ninety-one, approximately, it was down to the south side of Vista Ridge Mall, Music City Mall, the Vista. You know the mall. And it was on the south side of the mall. And we launched from Vista Ridge Ballfields. And it was a high-level show. It was an eighteen-minute show. It was several times, it was ranked one of the top shows in North Texas because it was long, it was big, it was a lot of room to watch it. We'd have usually about twenty to thirty thousand on site, forty to sixty total, because every parking lot and vacant field was filled with people and pickup trucks sitting back watching the show. It was great until development along Lake Vista forced us to not be able to, took away our fallout zone for the launch. So we had to find a new place. We tested three or four places, tested landfill, tested all kinds of stuff. Nothing really worked well, and we decided to do a low-level show here in Old Town. Started that a few years ago. This is what, our fifth year, Darren? Fourth or fifth year? And it's a low-level show, which means you don't see it very far away. If you're more than two blocks away from the grand, you probably don't get to see much. Although the main and mill lots have a great view if they're watching that direction. But it also means in our crowd, if we get five thousand people, that's pretty much capacity where we are. And that's where we usually hit, is somewhere between four and five thousand people. And it's basically a, it's a Sounds concert with an extra band and much fireworks thrown up in the air. Need to pause for a moment about July fourth of twenty twenty-three. And as I enter this, I want to point out, on the list of events, we listed Freedom Festival, which is a Castle Hills event. It's run by CHMA and Bright Realty and the shops. They put that on. We don't put it on, but we have a sponsorship contract with CHMA that we will provide certain support for the Freedom Festival in order to ensure the event can continue on after annexation. That includes providing police, fire, and streets. Okay, so we do the closures and traffic. Last year was the first time we really got in there and rolled up our sleeves and did it. And we've already talked with Kelly and, and, I'm not joking this time. I just went blank. I'm sorry, Keith. With Keith and Kelly about the ways we can do better on the traffic. And we got some plans for this next year. So we're contractually obligated to do that, and their event is held on July fourth. Our event is the Tuesday closest to the fourth. This year, the fourth is a Tuesday. We do not have the staffing to do both events on the same night. There's not enough cops and firefighters and parks and public works people to go and do the event that night. And I have to clone Darren, and frankly, we've been told not to clone Darren. So we've got to find a solution for that. And we found a couple of, three options here, and we're going to ask, well, I've listed two. I'll tell you the third. We found three options, and we're going to want to give you just some input from the council, what direction you think we should go. The easiest and cheapest is, we'll support their event, we'll cancel our event. That's it. No, the funding just doesn't get used. The second is, we support their event, we still hold our event, but on a different day, perhaps the Saturday before the fourth. And the third option is, we support their event, we take the funding we would have used for ours, and we apply it to theirs to enhance theirs. It'd be shuttle traffic for off-site parking and probably some onsite amenities also. So those are the three we're looking at, and we're open to comments on that.
I think that we need to, to look at it as our event regardless of where it's at because it's no longer their event and our event.
Well, I think to Mr. Kunkie's point, he means there as in it's CME.
Oh, okay.
That's running it.
Yeah, I'm not.
And which is, which is a private entity and not the municipality.
And parking there, since there's certain issues with parking.
Yes.
How is that?
So parking was a challenge.
It's bad.
Now, the residents that live there can either walk to, or I suppose they could use their golf cart, so they can certainly walk to it, and a lot do. People come from outside the area, which happens, mostly drive in. There are some parking on the perimeters, but then you have to walk in, and the parking on perimeter is somewhat limited. Our suggestion, we met, and we have a representative here from Bright Realty. And your name again?
I'm Katie Baird.
Katie, thank you. I'm losing names left and right today. I apologize. And we met with them already once. And one thing we talked about to solve that is shuttle parking would solve it. Because you could park maybe at the realm, or maybe it's at the schools because it's July, so the schools are closed, and the schools out there, Tech East and Kilo, not Kilo, Kilian.
Kilian.
I've lost it. I'm not going to say any more names. I can't remember any names. So the unnamed schools have a lot of spaces. And perhaps we could park there and then use shuttles to bring them, have a safe drop-off. And that would allow streets go in and actually close those streets to most traffic. Instead of leaving it open for some and not for others, actually shut it down the way we did this neighborhood to the northwest of City Hall during Western Days. We shut it down, and only residents go in and out. And it eliminated the parking problem. It eliminated most of the litter problem. But we think the same thing can work for that neighborhood directly adjacent to Lake Avalon Park. But to do that, you've got to have shuttle parking. And so if we did that option, the one here, where we, we support their event, but we also use our Red, White, and Louisville funding to help with their event, that's where a bunch of it would go, is for that shuttle parking.
So I'll say something. I've been going to this fireworks event for twenty years now. It's nice to see how it's grown. It's really becoming a big thing. So we do a great job out there. It goes on for a while, the fireworks are good, they're high. You sit up on the hill or at the right side, you watch the event, it's awesome to see it. It is a little tough to park if you're going to come to my slide. We do the track from other neighborhoods all over the place. So it's a lot of fun. I have concerns about canceling or even merging the events for the optics that they can put on the city, frankly. Is, oh, we just annex Castle Hills, and now, of course, they get the fireworks and what have you. So I have concerns about that. How would a person like to see both events happen? That's my opinion about the optics.
And that would be the second option here, that we move Sounds from the weekend?
That's what, because, yeah, because then I've been moving forward certainly, however often, just to move forward. Anyway, I say, love to have everybody from Louisville count to both, from the other side of Louisville count to both, because it's, it's neatness, neat experience. Be ready to wait to leave the neighborhood if you're going to do that. We're shut off, but it's a lot of fun. But I would like to keep both events.
I am of the opposite opinion. Just because I, when you've watched all the events that the staff runs, you know, having been a staff person before and having worked the past hours, you know, we want to be careful not to overkill. I think this is a good opportunity for people to come visit Castle Hills and see what's in Castle Hills and, and experience another part of Louisville. If we can do that concert that we did a few years ago at Lake Park, we can figure out parking in Castle Hill. And we're talking about one year, one change, but the impact of two events, two days, you know, in the same day. Yeah, it's going to be, I mean, and I'm not just, you know, there are budget implications. I'm an accountant, but it's also like catch a breath, you know.
Exactly.
You know, we know, you know, the cops, we know we have firefighters out there, but public works and parks are, you know, I think that's a little much. I think we can sell it to folks and, hey, you know, this year, we're doing something a little different because.
And it's on Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Because we get killed on social media for having this.
Well.
Not on Fourth of July.
I mean, you can, you can watch the city that's next to us. You can watch their fireworks when I won't name them. But, but I think this is a good idea, a good way for us to extend it, not overwork the staff, give people an opportunity to see another part of Louisville because it's probably amazing how many we have been over there. And we just kind of communicated, worked out the parking. Like I said, we did Lake Park because that was amazing because I didn't think that was going to work out. But I, in my opinion, I think that's the best way to go because you get, you listed all those events you have, and then this is hitting like in three days. I think that's a little much.
I agree.
My first impression was I want to do the merge just because to get people to see home in Louisville. Would it be possible to have parking in Legacy Louisville and then shuttle six miles over?
Possibly. And I'm going to ask Darren to speak up on this because there's always a standard of how long of a drive you want the shuttles to take. So Darren?
Yeah, the longer your shuttle drop-off and pickup is, the more shuttles you have to run, the more expense you have. A shorter shuttle distance, you can get it with, you know, a couple, three or four if they're big ones and keep the cost down. And most people won't wait, or they get pretty irritated if they have to wait more than ten, twelve minutes for a shuttle ride. As a matter of fact, we've had some folks that have pulled up and hadn't waited too long and just left. And then there's some folks that just refuse to ride a shuttle for whatever reason. So the shorter you can keep that shuttle pickup and drop-off, the better off you are.
Now, let me ask you this. How high, are these higher?
Yes.
Okay. So there are like some major shopping centers right there. You can park at any of those. Direct access right back on one twenty-one.
And people do.
And you can, you can watch them right there.
People do that, especially along one twenty-one in those shopping centers. The lights, the light poles make it kind of hard to see. The buildings are taller, but yeah, especially behind those buildings, people park there and watch.
Well, I think it's a little bit more than just fireworks, though. I mean, there's also.
A trick.
There's also an event that, you know, we would want people. So I actually, I agree with everything Brandon said. My first thought was also, well, wouldn't it be kind of cool just to do it together for a year? Because, you know, we know that we can't have them on the same day. That was the reason we didn't have it on the fourth last year was because we can't, we can't do both events. So I actually really like the idea of saying, well, every seven years, we're going to do this event together, you know, and it's a get to know, get to know your new neighbors. Let's, I love the idea of us doing this together. And then, you know, because it's only going to happen once every six or seven years where it falls on a Tuesday. So I think we can figure out the parking.
I'm going to go crazy with fireworks.
I'm from, I'm from Castle Hills, one event. I think the July, one through July fourth is just too, too close in nature to try to put staff on that. I think it is a great opportunity to, you know, see Castle Hills, see what it's all about. Sometimes you've got to force people to do things. And so nobody likes change, but nobody liked change when you did the Sounds of Louisville change either. So I think for one year, I think it's, and as long as we got the shuttles, you know, I think we'll be fine.
And Councilman Kelly is correct. We'll have to really communicate it well, and some people won't like it. But if we can communicate it as it's just a one year, but there's a much larger show, I can try to sell that. It won't make everybody happy. I'd never make everybody happy.
I think we've got enough.
I think I hear a good sense.
Conversation there to move on.
We can pretty quickly cruise through.
I'm sorry, just give.
Whoops. Yeah. So PBR Louisville. Again, a fairly new event, started in twenty-one. It had two years now. Attendance is going to be locked down by the size of the arena, which is about twenty-one hundred plus participants. So we hit twenty-three hundred this year. We're working with Casey Cox, our rodeo consultant, to find ways to boost that a little bit without going broke trying to make it happen. PBR is committed to this event. They like it. They like being here in North Texas. They already have given us their information for doing this again next year. So they're ready as long as we are ready. And that's where Bill Weaver Arena and the Greens Commons. We did do a survey after the event. We surveyed residents that lived in that Parkway neighborhood directly south of the arena, wanted to find out what kind of impacts they saw, good and bad. And frankly, the results were a lot more positive than I thought. I was afraid we'd get clobbered, but you've got to ask. You have to ask the question. Most people were very happy with it. Their biggest concern is that we think we can mitigate. They want a consistent staffing at the traffic barricade throughout impact hours, not just during the event, but before, so they can get into their houses, especially the ones on Parkway. They wanted earlier notice. And essentially, for Western Days, we notified people six weeks out, then two weeks out. We didn't give them the six-week one. So we can add that in very easily, not a problem. And then a couple of them right on Parkway who lined up chairs and watched said, well, we should give us tickets to the event. I'm like, well, maybe we can. And we talked to Casey, said we can probably find a way to do that or something. Some kind of incentive, a little thank you note for those people directly on the street. So we're listening to those residents and try and find ways to mitigate that. Western Days, this is our big two-day event. Started in seventeen, nineteen seventy-three, but it wasn't the city. It was Chamber and Community, mostly Chamber. Ran up until about nineteen ninety-eight or ninety-nine when they ran out of volunteers and went away, until two thousand and four, when it came back through the Main and Mill Association. And then they asked us in two thousand and seven, here, this is a big job, take it. And so we took it. It is a two-day event, Friday and Saturday, the last full weekend of September. So occasionally, it will conflict with the start of the State Fair. Usually, it doesn't. That's our biggest budget, but it also has a two-million-dollar economic impact, and that's with no multipliers. That is a raw two million dollars came into the Louisville economy in some form because of that event. Next year, September twenty-ninth and thirty, in case you're aren't near counting. We actually plan our event dates about five years out. Special challenge, this is just for Western Days. Cost escalation is huge. What we found this year was that things that had, in some cases, gone up forty, fifty, even a hundred percent. Things like generators, staffing had gone up tremendously. Talent entertainment costs have been going up anyway. And in fact, in twenty-two, you might recall, we had to come and get a supplemental appropriation from council because the money was gone and there was nothing to cut. So we're working to fix that for this next year, but cost escalation is a big thing. Entertainment, so it talks about the tour. So what happens with the acts, we go for kind of the regional appeal acts. We usually don't get the big national acts because, I mean, Miranda Lambert's a million bucks, you know? We don't have a million bucks. But we've got a couple hundred thousand, and we can bring in like a Leonard Skinner came in. But usually, it's more of a regional act. A lot of those are waiting for the national acts to book their openers because they want to open. We've lost performers that had vertically committed, lost them to Jimmy Buffett, lost them to Paisley, Brad Paisley. We had somebody locked in and ready. We were excited, and then, oh, Brad Paisley called me. So I'm like, oh, bye. Can't compete with Brad Paisley. And so they're booking earlier, but they're also booking regionally. One band in the east, one in the central, one in the west. And so we're getting slow-played by these bands. We approach them in January, February, and they're like, yeah, I'm interested, I'm interested, I'm interested. And then it's not till March or April when they finally give us a yes, or sometimes May, give us a yes or no. And if it happens to be a no, we have a very thin group of bands to choose from at that point. So we, it's, it's a trick. It's a Texas two-step trying to book bands. Logistics, again, the footprint changes every year. You know, we stretch it down to bed now. And Johnson Feed, we're going to have to do something going out to when the Main and Mill opens to try and get up to Keeley. But it changes every year because things keep changing. Personnel, the cost is very high for personnel. It's getting more expensive, and honestly, you're not always getting what we're paying for in some of those. We had some real concerns with the security personnel this past time at the gates. Some of them were very diligent and hardworking, and some of them, I would have paid them to stay away. And that's kind of the market we have right now. And then also, city staff has a huge impact on city staff. And then according to accommodations, I'll give you an example. We had someone, a business call this year after the event, that said, you closed the streets earlier than ever. I said, no, it's the same schedule we had for the past five years. Well, I never noticed it before. Okay, well, I'm glad, but you know, what can I do to help? Well, you shut it down, and people couldn't get to me. I need you to let my customers in. Said, well, but we can't because there's a fence, and there's tents, and there's people, and there's cars, and there's cattle. But they really wanted that to happen. And we're trying to help them find a solution, but it can't be, the street stays open for you throughout a festival with thirty thousand people on the ground. We had another business that asked if they could bring in a golf cart. We said, sure, you can bring in a golf cart. Okay, well, you're going to provide it. No. No, you can bring in a golf cart. We're not going to give you one. Then they called the event, said, okay, I've got it. Where do I park it and charge it? I don't know. It's your golf cart. Oh, no, you've got to give me a place to park it. We, we can't do that. So we're getting a lot of accommodations, and some we can do, some we can't. You know, the purple wristbands we give to the businesses is for their employees. You know, the purple wristbands we give to the businesses is for their employees to get in and out of the gate without having any kind of issue at the gate. And, uh, we had one business that has four employees that asked for forty wristbands. We gave them the wristbands, but that's, that's a lot of wristbands. So we love our partners down here in Old Town, but the fact is that they all have their own needs and own wants, and it can be difficult sometimes. That, Darren used to have hair. We did the same survey for three neighborhoods around here, the Walker Street Groundstones, South Village, and the Northwest Neighborhood, a lot of the same things. I'm gonna go through the whole list, but I want to point out that some of them are about access, and a lot of them are things that will require us to boost at the time we have things staffed. And I already told you, staffing is one of our biggest challenges, and what residents are telling us is, yeah, that's a big challenge, but I want you to do it. So we gotta find a way, even if it means hiring more outside people to do some of those things. And well, they're in your packet, I know, but it's, uh, this is the Northwest Neighborhood, we shut them completely down two years ago, and they loved it. This past year, because of, you know, staffing and trying to get control, we actually left Harrod Street open and closed the neighborhood. Harrod Street, according to the residents, became a freeway, and they hated it, and they were very miserable, and they told us, don't do that again, close Harrod. Like, okay, but it's gonna take a lot of work and expense on our part, but we'll find a way to make it happen. Uh, Holiday Stroll, uh, started in two thousand and three, but it didn't start Holiday Stroll, it started as a different name, and it was a two-day, then it went to one day, it's changed a lot. But we've been doing something since then, even before that, we had tree lighting at the old City Hall. Uh, it's always the first Saturday in December, and doesn't have the same tourism expectations of the events, because every city has one. Uh, about sixty-five percent of our attendees are from Louisville. And we have a few challenges here, the footprint is one, uh, we expanded this year down Charles Street to incorporate Johnson Feed, but it made kind of a difficulty of connecting the two areas. Um, traffic, the, uh, street closures had to be a little bit longer because of that footprint, but it was at a time when, yeah, the streets closed, but nothing's happening in the street. And if I'm a business owner, and you close a street in front of my business, I might be okay with it if something is happening, but if there's nothing happening, why'd you close the street? And we have legitimate reasons, but it's hard sometimes to communicate those. Um, we hear from some of the businesses on Main Street that their perfect attendance for the stroll is pretty small, but a certain type of, kind of, of their customers, basically. Here's my customers, these are the people that need to be here, I don't care about the rest. So like children's activities, we want to have more children's activities, and some of them are saying, no, no, that just brings standards with kids, that's not my customer, I want this other group. And, um, so there's a little bit of difficulty sometimes in reconciling what we're hearing from some of the business owners they want, and what we as a city want. We want to bring people down here, lots of people of different types and different, um, interests and different, uh, shopping habits. And so we try to go bigger, in some cases, they're trying to go smaller, so a little bit of accommodation there. Uh, competition for Christmas events, we're, we're fortunate, the cities around here have staged it out, so we're not competing, but the motorcycle toy run in particular. There's a lot of toy runs in North Texas, and there's sometimes, there's ones on the same day, and so the numbers have gone down, uh, for our toy run over the past few years. And there was some, we had to take the route out of Louisville, uh, because it was so short, and it's, it's, there's challenges with the toy run. It's a good event, brings in a lot of donations, but it's more challenging than it looks. Cost escalation's still an issue, uh, and then scheduling, all events have a midday lull, even the State Fair of Texas has a midday lull. It's just the event's so big and so much going on, you maybe not notice it, but the event planners, I guarantee you, notice it. Oddly enough, Color Palooza has an end-of-day lull, and I think it's partly because we have so many kids' activities, they do all of them, and then we start running out of materials and they leave. Uh, but all of our other events have a midday lull, even Western Days. Stroll is much more pronounced. We have the Santa breakfast, that is a breakfast, we have the tree lighting, which has to be at night, and there's a big gap in the middle. And the year we didn't fill the gap, people want us to fill the gap, so we started trying to fill the gap again. The parade helps, um, but it's really hard to keep steady flow of traffic throughout that event, and we're looking at various ways we might be able to do that. We've talked about moving the tree light into Friday night and doing it in conjunction with First Fridays, and make that the tree light into movie night, and then Saturday morning, have the breakfast, then the parade, and then we're done. And we haven't right, gotten buy-in on that yet, but that might be an option. Uh, so we're looking, we, we're, we're familiar with the lull, we've dealt with the lull since two thousand and three, have not found a solution for it.
Yes, a question about that, I know a bunch of time. Has there been thought given to moving the parade at night, where we can actually enjoy the lights, something combining with the tree light at the end?
We have researched that a few times. It's really cool to do. Uh, we talked to cities that have done it, and they said when they first changed over, the first two or three years, their parade got really small. Because people were just unsure what to do in the change, and will it be costly? The biggest challenge we found for our current route is the side streets onto Main are pretty dark. I mean, these are neighborhoods that were built in thirties, forties, maybe early fifties, in some cases built even before that, in the tens and twenties, and there's not a whole lot of lighting. And so we'd have to bring artificial lighting in order to keep a safe environment, and that raises the cost for us quite a bit. But when we did that research, we weren't using the barricades, the barricades might have an impact on that. So we can research it again. Um, we would have a little bit of a budget hit on our side that we'd have to prepare for, and, uh, we probably, at least for the first year or two, might have to have ways to assist participants, so that they don't feel like they have to drop out. It's a possibility. We actually had a, a script played out at one point, we had a, a way to work, we tested it, where the mayor would be in a convertible right near the front of the parade, and as he entered Old Town, he'd wave the wand, a little magic wand, like our magic button. And when he waved it here, those lights would come on, he waved it here, those lights would come on, and it was really cool, except the tree...
Bippity boppity boo.
But the tree was on Main Street at the time, so... So, a long, a long answer to say we've looked at it, it really was not feasible for us at the time, we're gonna look at it again and see if it's feasible now.
James, we're gonna go ahead and break here, since we're about three minutes, but I think, uh, that allows us to come back to the workshop and begin with special events opportunities and have that dialogue.
Last three or four slides will be in.
We're gonna go ahead and, um, uh, let the workshop uphold, we'll start up our regular, um, meeting here in about three and a half quarters. All right, it is Monday, January ninth, at seven PM, and I'm calling this meeting of the Louisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. Uh, tonight, uh, with our invocation, uh, Councilmember Green.
Good evening. Since it is the first meeting of the year, I'm gonna do something a little different than I normally do. Um, so I would just like to, uh, read a little, um, New Year's prayer, and, uh, have, please join me. Dear God, thank you that you make all things new. Yesterday is gone, and with, and with it, any regrets, mistakes, or failures we may have experienced. It's a good day to be glad and give thanks. We thank you for today and the new opportunities it brings. We pray for guidance on our decisions and hearts that desire the betterment of the community above all else. Amen.
Our flags with, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Jones.
Please join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Item C one, public hearing. Tabled public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from office district to duplex district on approximately point two seven four acres, out of the E. Pickett survey, abstract one oh one four, located at the northwest corner of Oakwood Lane and Belair Boulevard, as requested by Milan Hamla, the property owner, in case number twenty-two dash ten dash four dash Z. This undeveloped lot is zoned office district and located in the curve of Oakwood Lane where it meets Belair Bou- Boulevard. The property is surrounded by single-family, multifamily, and neighborhood-serving commu- commercial uses. The duplex unit district allows duplexes, single-family attached, and single-family detached. The applicant plans to build a duplex on the property. Staff finds this request consistent with the Louisville twenty twenty-five vision plan update, big move of diverse and thriving neighborhoods, by providing additional housing options while maintaining compatibility with an existing neighborhood. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, five to nothing, on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and this item was originally on the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two council agenda, but was tabled due to a lack of the required number of city council members present to pass the ordinance without three readings. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, and we do have Mr. Richard Lutke, AICP Planning Director, and Milan Hamla, and I apologize if I'm getting that last name wrong, um, the owner and applicant, um, for any questions. Council, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Second. I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Council, please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance in the caption.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately zero point two seven four acres, out of the E. Pickett survey, abstract number ten fourteen, located at the northwest corner of Belair Boulevard and Oakwood Lane. From office district zoning to dupless, duplex district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made provo- promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item two, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from planned development multifamily three district to planned development estate townhouse district, on an approximately one point seven one nine acre tract of land, out of the A. Singleton survey, abstract number eleven thirty-eight, located on the northwest corner of Lady Tesla Avenue and Essex Drive extension, as requested by Brian Dench, P.E. of Land Design Incorporated, on behalf of Eric Stanley of Brico Lands CH LLC, the property owner, case number twenty-two oh eight dash six PZ. On January third, twenty twenty-two, city council adopted the Castle Hills planned development district that incorporated all provisions of the Castle Hills Development Agreement, along with the variances to the agreement approved since nineteen ninety-six. The PD was adopted to ensure that zoning in Castle Hills was tailored to match existing development, and that future development is compatible and consistent with existing development. The subject property is in the Realm Subdistrict of Castle Hills in a zone PD MF three, allowing for multifamily development. The applicant is seeking approval to change the base zoning district to ETH for a single-family development of twelve lots. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval for to nothing on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, and it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Lutke is available for questions?
I'm gonna have some questions for Mr. Lutke. Hi. So, um, I don't have, in general, I don't have an issue with, um, with this zone change, I do have a question, because I'm a little bit confused. So if, if it, the property is currently zoned for multifamily, but the concept plan shows it as open space. So what is, what was, I would expect to see those two to be consistent, so what is the actual intended use of this property before this zone change request?
The overall area was zoned, uh, had a base zoning of multifamily, and, uh, I think it was intended to be, you know, drainage facilities and open space, in kind of support of the multifamily. The street, uh, layout changed slightly and kind of created a natural dividing line, because there is, um, existing single-family detached, just adjacent. So once the different parts of this area started developing, it made sense that this exact location, um, be converted to, uh, single-family detached uses.
Okay, and so, um, for the drainage piece, I'm assuming there was a drainage analysis that's been done for this, and, and everything's all right, we're not causing any problems, it's all accounted for elsewhere?
That is correct.
Okay, um, and so then my last question, on the concept plan, it shows, uh, that there's kind of an open space area with some nice trails on the other side of Essex? Um, and I believe that's for future development.
Right.
So I, if there's any way that we could incorporate some type of connection between this cul-de-sac and, and what's gonna be there in the future, so that the people at the end of the cul-de-sac don't have to walk all the way out and around, um, I would love to see that incorporated into this development, but, um...
Okay, we will work with the developer to try to accomplish that.
Okay, perfect. That's all the questions I had.
If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I will move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth.
Move to prove the ordinance is set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meredith and a second from Councilmember Troyer, City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately sixteen point seven one nine acres, out of the A. Singleton survey, abstract number eleven thirty-eight, located at the northwest corner of Lady Tesla Avenue and the Essex Drive extension, from planned development multifamily three district zoning to planned development estate townhouse district zoning, correcting the official zoning map and list of existing planned developments, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item three, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from agricultural open space district to planned development mixed use, on approximately seven point nine four acres, out of the L. Bourgeois survey, abstract number fifty-two, located at three oh one and three thirty-three Uger Lane, as requested by Patricia Fant McAdams, on behalf of Venkataramana Murani, the developer and Uger Lane LLC of Edward C. Pollster, the property owners, case number twenty-two dash oh nine dash eight dash PZ. The proposed rezoning to planned development provides twenty-one single-family detached homes and forty-one townhomes with approximately one point eight acres of open space. The base of mixed use allows for flexibility in lot size and location to allow density while maintaining open space. This application was made prior to the adoption of the Unified Development Code. Several prior standards, such as tree preservation, have been written into this planned development to provide continuity and ensure project feasibility. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval for to nothing on the December twentieth, twenty twenty-two meeting. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, and we do have Patricia Fant from McDa- McAdams, the applicant, and Richard Lutke, our planning director, available for questions.
Richard, I apologize, I'm gonna have some more questions. Um, okay, so on this one, we have, um, we have a pretty significant increase in the density proposed on this lot than what was previously proposed. So I was, one, one of my questions was, have we heard anything from any of the surrounding property owners, um, about this zone change?
Uh, staff did not receive any feedback from any of the surrounding property owners.
Okay, um, so I guess one of the things that I'm a little worried about, I don't necessarily have a, an issue with the density that's proposed. One of the things I am worried about, though, is the, um, so I, I think I was reading in the text, and it said that forty-three feet would be the, the most narrow single-family lot. But when I look at the graphic, it looks like there might be at least a few of them that are forty-one feet. So with a, I'm just looking at if we have a street that has, you know, this forty-one feet wide, and then we're gonna have a driveway that's twenty feet, eighteen feet, plus, you know, the dust pans, there, there's really not gonna be any room to park on the street.
Yeah, our, the standards in the UDC are a minimum of forty for a front entry. Uh, that's, that's getting kind of close to the threshold, and of course, this, um, uh, application was submitted prior to the adoption of the UDC, so it's really kind of a mashup of both standards, uh, trying to incorporate as many of the new requirements as possible. Um, I believe that with a forty-one, we, I think with the driveway spacings in the radii, we, we, you can accommodate parking for one car on the street.
Okay, one car per, per house, or one car on the street per lot.
And I would ask Ms. Font if she could clarify that, the applicant.
So we're following the, uh, the code. I'm not entirely sure how much space we'll have in between driveways, but we'll be able to, if we want to group them, we can look at grouping them. So it's like two next to each other, and then a longer space, and then two next to each other, and then a longer space.
That, that was gonna be my next question to you, because I, I don't know, the graphic that was in here kind of shows them all being on, um, a consistent side of the lot. Um, but if, yeah, if there's an opportunity to kind of put two of them on, you know, one on the right, one on the left, so that there's more space in between, um, that helps that concern for me. And then as far as the, so the, the townhomes are all, uh, alley entry, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I, I think... Okay. So, I, I think I can reconcile my parking concern, especially considering that there's, with the streets that have the single family on them, it's only on one side of each street, not on both sides. So, I, I think I, I think I can get past the parking, especially considering that we're, y'all are following the, our, our design standards. I was going to ask if there was a, there, there's a little pedestrian cut through to get to the, the open space.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a particular reason that it is where it is, or couldn't it kind of be more centrally located, so that it's kind of off to the, I guess that's the northwest corner? Can it kind of move over, or does it absolutely need to be there?
It does not absolutely need to be there. We can look at shifting it over. I do know that the, we, you, we are not dedicating the detention pond, but we are dedicating the, the outlined around. So, it, we would have to work with city to move that trail.
Okay. Well, I think the trail is in a great spot. I'm just wondering, like at the pedestrian cut through to try to get, so that the people that are kind of down here in the development don't have, they're so far away from it, just trying to more, get it more centralized, so that it's, you know, it's gonna be further from some people, but a lot more people are gonna get it a little closer to their house.
Sure, yes.
The illustration in the ordinance is, is a concept plan, so we can make some minor adjustments like that, like relocating the trail to a more central location. As, as the plans further develop, we'll be looking at those items, at what makes more sense for the final drawings and layout.
Okay, perfect. I think that's all I had.
Other questions? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Kelly. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth.
Okay.
Second, I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately seven point nine four acres out of the L. Bourgeois survey abstract number fifty-two, located at three oh one and three thirty-three East Uger Lane, from agriculture open space district zoning to planned development mixed use district zoning, correcting the official zoning map and a list of existing planned developments, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning change and amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Item passes six to nothing. Item D, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I do have a few requests to appear before the City Council. Lynn Lucier? And Ms. Lucier, if you could state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Lynn Lucier. I live at the Evergreen apartment complex, where several of us have been attending these meetings. I wanted to share my personal experience with why this is such a problem, and this is my, my, this is, this is how it has affected me personally. I, I know that we have all been told for many years not to expect Social Security to totally, to count on that for our retirement. And I had a 401K and retirement. I worked, I had, I have three children, a single mother, and I worked continuously. I worked all my life until I had an, I had a medical emergency that required me to have three units of a blood transfusion, and that, this was in the eighties, and that saved my life. And eventually, that, I discovered that had hepatitis C in it. And after ten or fifteen years, my liver, I, I had, because of the hep C, I had stage four cirrhosis of the liver, and I was forced to go on disability for ten to twelve years, and I was waiting for a liver transplant, and I wasn't able to work. So, all my retirement money, I had to use for that time. Well, I had, in the meantime, graduated, after my kids got out of school, I graduated and had a master's in social work. During the time of my disability, I let my license go, because when you have stage four cirrhosis, I never heard of anyone that survived. Well, there was medication that cured, cured me, and I was healthy, able to work. My license was no longer good, and I couldn't get it renewed at that time. So, I was forced to just live on Social Security. I worked at some menial jobs. Long story short is, just, there are situations that happen. I'm, I'm in process of studying, getting my license. Sure, I'm taking the test next month. At age seventy-five, I'm going to be looking for a full-time job to support my living, and it's, it's nothing that I had, could have done to, to change the circumstances. So, it's, I understand why people think you should plan better, but there's times when there's nothing you can really do. I have, in the last six months, used a credit card to pay for my rent, five months. So, in the last six months, I have paid my own rent, and it has just circled, that's, you can't do that. It's financially a disaster. So, I just wanted to explain my personal dilemma, and I'm, it's not because of being irresponsible or not planning, but, but sometimes things just happen. So, anyway, thank you for hearing us, and I appreciate your helping us in any ways you can to get some help for our concerns.
Thanks, Ms. Lucier.
Thank you.
Joyce Fuel?
Nancy Sign. Is this good, Nancy? How's that? Is that okay?
Works.
Okay. My name is Joyce Fuel, and I live in Lewisville. I know that we're talking to you about senior living challenges, and like these other folks, my rent is over fifty percent of my income. There's another twenty-five percent of my income that goes toward utilities and insurance. So, for all of us math scholars, that's eighty percent, and so it leaves me twenty percent, which doesn't go far. That's the facts, and I don't wanna bore you with the sob story about my life and the challenges that old people can face. Even though there's an element of truth in all this, I'd like to relate it in a different way. I just thought I'd make fun. Let's clear something up as I begin. I know I'm here with all these old people back here, but I had to lie about my age to get into the senior living, so I'm really too young to be there. I've been, I've tried to be creative in finding odd jobs. It's not that I'm lazy, and I didn't try to supplement my income. I tried belly dancing, but I was really surprised to find that there is some age discrimination there, and evidently, the customs don't come in plus sizes. So, that was out. Then I tried throwing newspapers. I thought, oh, that'll be good. Well, they didn't like me throwing the morning paper at three PM, and my aim's not what it used to be. I'd just hurl them out there, and I kind of scared a little kitty cat when I hit the sprinklers and got on the cat, and so, anyway, cats don't like water. So, that was out. Security car, security guard, tried that, but I've come to some arthritis in my trigger finger, and they don't have voice command on guns yet, so that was out. I thought, finally, I'll be a dog walker, something I can do, and I love animals. But that Great Dane was so strong, I couldn't hold on. I fastened his leash to my walker, thinking that would slow him down. He ran back home with the walker. That's the best exercise I'd had in a long time. So, from now on, I'll put the leash on the walker and put the brakes on to help a little bit, too. As far as clothing and food are concerned, those have to go together because, you know, one affects the other. These are the things that have kept me from losing weight and having to spend money on clothes. Potato chips are cheaper than broccoli, and they're on sale way more often. Cauliflower spoils faster than mashed potatoes in butter. Plus, cauliflower doesn't go with gravy, nobody likes that. Cake's easier to bake than vegetable casserole. I tried it once, but I kept cutting my finger, you know, slicing those vegetables, so you don't have to slice anything with chocolate cake, except the cake. As far as spending money on utilities, well, hot water's overrated and cold showers are good for ya, so they say. Did you know you can heat your whole apartment with candles? You put a note out and you ask for everybody to use candle jars. Then don't get the plastic ones, that's not good. And then you can melt them all together, and newspaper works awesome for heating those candles up and putting them back together. Then the room fills with smoke, and you gotta open the window, and then the smoke goes out the window, and the fire department, just kidding, the fire department gets called, and my nosy neighbors called them. So, the smoke gave me away, so that one didn't work. Now, I've seen extension cords running across the hall. You can put them right out your front door and over to an unknowing neighbor, because they're old and they don't know any better. And then you can put a rug across there, and nobody trips. You can do that. I've even, there's another option with that one. There's little plugins out by the Coke machine, and if you wait till maintenance leaves, you can go out there and run your extension cords out there, and nobody sees them, it's dark. As far as medicine is concerned, I'm gonna keep buying my husband's blood pressure medicine, because he gets kind of grouchy when the blood pressure goes up. I thought about stopping our mood elevators, but the only reason we've been able to stay married forty-six years is that we're both on drugs. So, I tried to make this a little more amusing, and you can remember my Chiefs shirt, so whenever you think of the Chiefs and they were in, you can say, oh, I'll think about those seniors and challenge, their living challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Linda Tinnarello? My apologies if I got the name wrong.
I've been here since the very core meeting and listened to you all, and the help that you have supported us, it means so much to us. As I said, I have attended for almost day one, the core group. I have lived at Evergreen three years, three months. I was a disabled senior citizen from Flowermane who lost their rebel home because the land was sold. I have no children. I have no family. I get emotional, sorry. To help with expenses, my only income is Social Security. I'm not, I cannot afford a car, because the one that I had in Flowermane was, was unrepairable. It was older, unrepairable. So, I couldn't buy a new used one or anything of that sort. So, I was basically out of transportation. Things were bleak at the time. I found Evergreen. Rent was, seemed to be okay at the time, was like seven hundred dollars or seven twenty a month for a one-bedroom. My Social Security was only less than a thousand dollars a month, and I worked my whole life. I, I wasn't depend, I mean, my Social Security wasn't dependent on my husband's that passed away, you know? I was the breadwinner, basically. I had to cut back on dental, vision, and hearing, which I never thought I was going to have to do. Evergreen, one year later, after I was there, went up on rent, eighty dollars a month each year. My income did not come close to that. My small savings was gone. I rely on public transportation, because I'm reliable on transportation to take me to doctor's appointments. What happened this past year was, I, I've had a macular degeneration of my eye, so I have a specialist I have to go to, and two times that I had an appointment, they were late getting me there. So, I had to pay fifty dollars a time, because I didn't get there in time. I also, this is, what this has done is caused high blood pressure, and, and things that is difficult for me to understand. Social Security was less than a hundred dollars a month. I had to cut back on dental, again, as I was talking about. Vision and hearing, I now, as I mentioned, have macular degeneration, knitting shots in eye every five weeks. My vision is going down. I'm scared. I now have to use a magnifying glass to see. I cannot afford the cost. I'm here tonight to tell you that there are people like myself, more than myself, that are trying their best to work things out, and it just doesn't seem like it's not working. But I do appreciate you all for all that you have done, the Sadeev Lewisville, for our organization, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nancy Sansom?
Ms. Nancy Sansom?
Good evening. I'm Nancy Sansom. I'm from 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard in Louisville. And we represent, we represent the new group of Louisville Seniors Living Challenges. And we're here to explain and express to you our concerns about survival, survival in our homes that we live in. Our new motto is, let's keep a roof over our heads. And we appear here to speak on monthly affordable housing issues, and we are represented here by many of our contingents and our dedicated and never-tiring group of members, which you see in the back. Since we started organizing our housing group one year ago, when we realized something was really wrong with some of the rent charts, with just a few interested members, we organized. And we expanded our dreams now to the point where we have many, many more members that are in this tight situation and are looking for some way to survive. I just want to mention the kindness and consideration of Louisville Mayor TJ Gilmore, Brandon Jones, and other council members. The city manager and staff, Judge Andy Eads and his staff, Bobby Mitchell, and many other agencies that have helped us in so many ways to move ahead. We've moved very rapidly this year, and we continue to make new goals, and we continue to expand out into other communities in Louisville. And our primary goal, again, as you probably know, is to provide information to legislators and officials that help protect and support those seniors with low and fixed income. We are not high-income people. We are at the bottom, and we do not have the funds to pay on the rent chart, 60% affordable. We're at the 20% to 30%. And I have a handout that I'll, I have copies for everybody, which I'll give to you later, which has the chart in the back of that pamphlet. And as you know, many of us are barely hanging on. And so we are now in an emergency housing crisis. Many residents are not able to meet their rents, as you've heard from some of our spokesmen's here. They have used their credit card credit up. Some have gone into bankruptcy, others with chronic illness in their 80s, with chronic illnesses are trying to find part-time jobs to pay the rent. So on the other hand, our first-year operations have been amazing and unexpected help from many places. Without a budget, we held our first successful housing conference at Thrive Recreation Center, and we had five wonderful speakers, which several are here now. And we have 15 vendors. And what I'm trying to say is, United Way, Denton County, and Salvation Army have recently stepped up to assist several residents, and we are very grateful for their actions and efforts. Also, with span transportation to Flower Mountain back to Louisville is a miracle. It's taken 14 years to get that to happen. And thanks to Judge Eads, he was able to help us out. So in closing, we are grateful, very grateful for all of you and all your concern for us. Many of you work very hard and are very cognizant of our situation. And we'd appreciate if you'd continue, we would continue to reach out to your state and local officials in making policy and program changes which are favorable to Louisville seniors in their time of need. Again, remember, our motto is, let's keep a roof over our heads. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sansom. I want to thank you all for coming out and sharing your personal stories. I think that's very important to understand the actual impacts of spreadsheets. Too many times, at the different levels of government, we look at spreadsheets, we don't look at the people. So continue the work. The state legislature starts this tomorrow. I'll actually be in Austin tomorrow, so I appreciate you all being here, and I will share your stories. Next up, Consent Agenda. Do we have any other comments for public comment? Okay, thank you. Consent Agenda. All the following items on the Consent Agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen, a request for removal of an item, a speaker card, or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, did we have any requests for removal?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you'd please vote. Consent Agenda passes six to nothing. Item F9, consideration of three alternative standards associated with parking, windows, and driveways for public storage located at 1419 South Stemmons Freeway, as requested by Trey Braswell of Kimley Horn on behalf of Jared Yates of Public Storage, the property owner. Due to the widening of the Interstate Highway 35E corridor, the front portions of three storage buildings were removed. To comply with the IH35E corridor overlay design standards, the following three alternative standards are requested. A, to allow for three parking spaces in lieu of the required 52. B, to require, reduce the required storefront glazing on Building A from 40 to 26%, and on Buildings B and Building C from 40 to 0%. And C, to reduce the required driveway spacing from 300 feet to eight feet to the north and 300 feet to 172 feet to the south. This request was initiated prior to the adoption of the Unified Development Code, which now gives the city engineer authority to review and approve alternative standards related to driveway spacing. The Overlay Board recommended unanimous approval, five to nothing, of these alternative standards on November 15, 2022. It is recommended that the city council approve the three alternative standards set forth in the caption above, and we do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, here, available for questions.
Richard. Here we go again. I do have a question. So, you know, I understand this is an existing business, it's being impacted by the widening of 35, right?
Correct.
So certainly, you know, want to find a way to help them out. I, with the parking, I have a question. I do feel like the three parking spaces for this particular use is probably appropriate. My concern would be, and I don't know if this would be possible, but I'm just thinking in the realm of possibilities, what if they were to sell the property and somebody converted the existing buildings to a different use? Would the three parking space requirement still be valid, or would they, would there be an increased parking requirement if that were? In other words, does the three parking spaces run with the use, or is it running with the land?
Typically with the use, usually, typically a change of use will trigger either a new engineering site plan, or depending on the level of redevelopment, then it will trigger other requirements of the overlay, depending on the magnitude of the change. But in most cases, yes, the use would trigger compliance with parking if it became, say, an office complex.
So even if they were able to find a way to use the existing buildings, which I'm not sure how that would even work?
You never know.
You never know. But change the use, they would still need to come back and change that parking requirement, right?
Yes, the overlay does require that.
Because I definitely don't think that three versus 52 is appropriate for anything other than this particular use, so.
It's these very unusual situations that the alternative standards process was designed.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. I don't know if anybody else does or not. If not, I'll make a, I'll move to approve, move to approve this, the three alternative standards as set forth in the caption.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item 10, consideration of one alternative standard associated with facade materials for cigars on 35 located at 1980 South Stemmons Freeway, as requested by William Peck of William Peck Associates Incorporated on behalf of Gurreng Patel, Cigars on 35, the property owner, case number 22-11-4-ALT STD. The applicant is opening a cigar business at 1980 South Stemmons Freeway, which was most recently occupied by the Kyoto Restaurant. The proposed modernization of the architecture requires one alternative standard to allow a reduction to 53% brick and stone on the facade in lieu of the required 80%. The Overlay District Board recommended unanimous approval, six to nothing, on December 6, 2022. And it is recommended that the city council approve the alternative standards as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, is available for questions, as is Mr. Bill Peck, who is here to speak in support if required or needed.
I don't have any questions. I think it's a good-looking building, though. I'll just. It is. It really is.
All right. There are no additional questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Are we approving that with the alternative standards?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion and a second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Mr. Peck, thanks for being here. Item 11, consideration of acceptance on, of the resignation of Heather Sisarello from Place Number Three on the Old Town Design Review Committee. Declare a vacancy exists in consideration of appointment to fill the vacancy on the OTDRC. Ms. Sisarello has served in Place Number Three of the Old Town Design Review Committee since 2020. This position is required to be filled by an Old Town Business Representative who is employed within the Old Town Center Design District or Old Town Design District. Ms. Sisarello has advised that she is no longer employed within the Old Town Design District nor residing in the city of Louisville. It's recommended that the city council accept the resignation, declare a vacancy, and consider an appointment of Odin Klack as set forth in the caption.
Mayor, I move to accept the resignation, declare a vacancy, and appoint Odin Klack to Place Number Three on the Old Town Design Review Committee as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Thank you in advance for your service, Mr. Klack. All right. Item 12, consideration of an appointment of the city of Louisville representative on the Upper Trinity Regional Water District Board of Directors to complete the term ending May 31, 2025. Due to Deputy City Manager Eric Ferris retiring in January 2023, the city council will need to consider a new appointment to fill the vacancy of the city's representative to the Upper Trinity Regional Water District Board of Directors. City staff recommends that Assistant Director of Public Services Kelly Rouse be appointed as the city's representative. Representatives on the UTRWD Board of Directors serve a term of four years, and the current term Eric Ferris was serving was set to expire effective May 31, 2025. It's recommended that the city council appoint Assistant Director Kelly Rouse to serve as a board member on the UTRWD Board of Directors as set forth in the caption above. Council, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to appoint Assistant Director Kelly Rouse to serve as a board member on the UTRWD Board of Directors as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Motion passes six to nothing. Thanks in advance, Kelly. All right. We're going to go ahead and go into reports. Councilmember Meredith, would you mind taking the lead on that?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I have some library public activities for the week. Dragon Egg Make and the Take Drop in activity Tuesday, January 10, 3:00 to 7:30. No registration required. The Hive, Morning Book Buzz, Active Adult Book Club for Adults, Wednesday, January 11, 10:00 to 11:00 AM. No registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. Healthy Carbohydrates for Adults, Wednesday, January 11, 11:30 to 12:30. Registration is required at the Crawford Meeting Room. Resumes with Renee for Adults, Thursday, January 12, 6:00 to 7:00 PM. No registration required at the small conference room. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes. I have several things for the Louisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances. We have a Groundworks Showcase presented by Groundworks Dance Company on January 14. There will be a free musical theater workshop for adults presented by Our Productions Theater Company and Young Artist Training Program on January 21. Texas Tunes on January 21 will be Alejandro Escovedo, presented by the city of Louisville. And then, as always, Friday nights, 6 to 9, acoustic jam sessions presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville. And activities, we have Art Talk, Randall M. Goode, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville on January 10. And there are two exhibitions, Abstraction, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, January 7 through February 4, and Living the Dream, It Takes a Team, art and photography exhibition presented by the Committee to Commemorate MLK Day, and that will be January 21 through February 22. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? City Secretary?
Thank you.
What do we have, Mr. Lutke?
Nothing, Mayor.
No problem.
Thanks, Mayor.
Greenlighting, go.
There you go. Thanks, Mayor. City Councilmembers, Parks Fan. A couple of reminders, on Wednesday, starting at 5 o'clock, we have our open house for our healthy infrastructure plan draft right before the, actually, it's going to be a joint P&amp;Z and Park Board meeting over at Thrive, so if you can join us, please do. And then also, on Saturday, January 21, the Friends of Lila are going to be putting their, their annual event of how, to remind people how to bring nature into your backyard at Thrive, so you can go to the friendsoflila@lila.org and find out a little bit about that.
How did the?
Shontae's real excited about that, too.
How'd the New Year's Day hike go?
It was fantastic. The Elm Fork branch of the Texas Master Naturalist helped lead a first-day hike at Thrive Nature Park, and I actually learned a whole bunch about the park that I didn't even know at this point. So if you can get out there, they have a follow-up event every third Saturday of the month at 9 o'clock.
Super. Thank you.
Nothing to look for.
Thank you.
Mayor, the TCU score, oh, wait, wrong tab. The lake level, sir, is 520.28, so 1.7 feet below the normal pool level.
But what's the score?
Last I looked, it was like 10 to 24. They were, they were losing.
All right. Well, let's move, let's move away from the down. Thank you. Chief?
Mayor, council, as you all know, we lost Assistant Chief Jay Powell last Friday to a medical emergency. His funeral will be this coming Friday at 2:30 PM at the, I'm drawing a blank, Cross Timbers Church in Argyle.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I assume you're going to talk about the mayor's quarterly update on Wednesday after this one?
You're welcome to do it.
I will do real quick then. So we have a quarterly mayor's update coming up on the 18th of January. These are great. It's a great way to kind of informally, kind of get informed, what's going on, speak with the mayor, understand more about what's going on with the city. It's from 7 to 8 again on January 18 at Thrive, 1950 South Valley Parkway. I look forward to seeing everybody out there.
Councilmember Green?
I just had one announcement. Now that I'm officially finished giving Richard a hard time, I wanted to mention that we do have the groundbreaking for the Tiddle McFadden Public Safety Complex on January 20th at, it's at the fire station at 9:00 AM.
Councilmember Jones?
All right. Got a couple MLK announcements. As everyone knows, for, for quite a few years, there's been an MLK essay and poetry that goes on. It rotates around Louisville ISD. This year, it is back in Louisville High School, so please come out and come check out the works of art and the poetry and the, but earlier that day, if you want to get up and you want to do some work, and last year, most of the council members did, we'll, there'll be a cleanup and revitalization of Champion Macedonia Cemetery from 9 to 12. Bring your own tools, come, come out, have a good time. Fellowship, a lot of our staff came out last year. I'm looking at Keith over there. It helped out, and we did a really great job, and it's just a continuation of this great program.
What kind of tools would you need to bring?
A little bit of everything. I broke two chainsaws out there.
Flamethrower.
Last year.
You have two chainsaws.
Well, I have four, but now I only have two.
That just means she can't use a chainsaw.
No.
But.
Oh, you, I can show you how to use chainsaws. Oh, I can show you how to use a chainsaw.
But we'll have a generator out there for people who have electrical tools. Come out there, bring your rakes or whatever. It should be easier than last year because last year, we had to cut down a lot of brush.
A lot.
So it should be a little easier this year. But come out and come help out and learn some history about Lewisville.
Rakes, gloves, hand tremors.
And if you do come, make sure you have long sleeve.
Long-sleeved shirts.
Because there were several that were from head to toe. Poison ivy or oak or whatever it was.
Councilman Kelly got beat up in the arms.
It was pretty bad. I would just... I just want to give a shout out to Chief and our Lewisville Police Department family in the loss that the city of Lewisville. And it's not a little loss, it's a big one. I've known Jay Powell since he came on as a rookie. And what's really funny is I used to write out with him and give him the hardest time and explain to him that he really only thought he was hired by the police department, but he was really a test of our explorers program that we were about to start up. So I had to say that. If you didn't have a chance to meet Jay Powell, Assistant Chief Jay Powell, he was as fine a man as you will ever meet on this side of heaven. And I'd just like to express my condolences and tell him to ride high.
City Manager?
I'll start with the happy things and then end talking about Jay as well. But I wanted to welcome Keith Marvin back. He did everything in his power to get here as soon as he could. And we're excited to have him back, so I wanted to welcome him. And I also... He's conveniently not here, but this would be Eric Ferris's last council meeting, but he had another engagement tonight. So he's been here for thirty-seven years with the city of Lewisville, and he has been Donna's and my right-hand man. He... You know, we wrote the Lewisville Way. The staff came up with the Lewisville Way to try to encapsulate what it meant to be an employee at Lewisville and the culture. And really, that... It was because people were retiring. We wanted to make sure that what we had that was special in Lewisville continued. Eric Ferris is that special person. And so he is that continuity that's been here for thirty-seven years. And you think about the things that have changed over those years in Lewisville, and he has been able to ride that wave this whole time. So I wish him all the best luck. We will not... He does not want to have a party. He is adamant about it.
So we're going to give him one?
But I will tell you, on the nineteenth, we are... So he's actually... His last day will be... He'll come to the Tittle McFadden Public Safety groundbreaking, and that will be his last hurrah with us. But on the nineteenth, we are basically going to have an Eric Ferris Open House. So his office will be open. I've told him he will not do anything that day except for accept guests. And you can stop by and say hi to him and tell him how much he's meant to you. So... And we may have a cake in there and maybe a gift somewhere during the day, but no ceremony. I've promised him no ceremony. So... And then finally, I did want to say a little bit about Jay, who's all of our friends, and it's been a really hard time for a lot of us. But I'm not going to cry. But I will say that there... You know, Jay was... You know, in the city attorney's office, you don't... I didn't come over too much to City Hall, so I didn't know a lot of people. But Jay Powell was my friend from day one. I know, Lauren, you did a post. It was the exact same thing for me. Mary Shell told me a story that was great about Jay the other day. She said, you know, I came into... You know, she's not very close with Jay, but she... This is just a perfect Jay example. She comes into a city council meeting and she drops her badge. She tells Jay, "Gosh, I'm a hot mess. I keep my badge, my little thing that attaches it to my belt keeps breaking and it keeps falling all over the place. I've lost so many badges. I keep having to replace it." And at the end of the council meeting, Jay comes up to her and says, "Here, have mine." And he is a heavy-duty one from the police department. "Have mine." And so she literally has been wearing Jay Powell's little badge since... But that was Jay. Like, all those little moments, he touched all of us, right? And I don't think he had any concept of what impact he had on people's lives.
No, he didn't. He had extreme wicked sense of humor, too.
So anyway, I just want to say that our community's hurting, but we love Jay and, you know, I know he's in a better place.
Thank you. So just a couple of brief words. It's Mr. Ferris, of course, leaving us and Mr. Powell leaving us as well. Both of these gentlemen are models of what I talk about when I talk about building community. They left a room brighter than they found it. Both of them do and did. And Eric, I want to thank for his service. He has always been steady, and he's always been one of those voices of reason. When I couldn't understand why something in Lewisville was done the way it was because I'm not a native, he could help me square that up. And so I appreciate that, and it's going to be amiss. But yeah, I know, Eric, you're not here, but I bet you're watching. And we love you, and we really appreciate all that you do. And we know where you live, so we're going to find you if we have a question on where something's buried around here. I do want to say just one brief thing about Jay. We weren't friends in the normal sense. It's hard to be on city council and have staff that are friends. That's a difficult road to square. But Jay never, ever passed up an opportunity to give me a hard time. Not at all. He would salute me every time. And every time, I would be embarrassed because I have never done anything to deserve or earn a salute. That's reserved for those folks that serve in the military or in our public service. That is not me. And he knew it. And he would poke the bear every time, and I loved him for that. We need more Jay Powells in the world. And I guarantee that as he looks down, he does not want us to be upset or to be crying. He wants us to be laughing. He wants us to be built in a community, and he wants us to leave things brighter than we found them. We could do a lot to be like Jay. And with that, we are done with reports. And I do think we need to return back to the workshop session. So we're going to take just a five-minute recess here between this and going back to workshop. I think some of us have earned that. And then we'll start back up here in... At eight oh five, in the workshop session next door. You're welcome to join us if you're a resident or if you're here. You're absolutely welcome to join us to continue the workshop.
Events should be expanded or added or eliminated, and we've done all three of those. And there are certain criteria we use, for example, here in this bullet here. If the audience is consistently strong, if we see a growth pattern, and we believe that adding elements to it would increase the audience appeal or increase our marketability, then it's considered for expansion or growth. If it's an event that there's a niche that's not being filled... And I'll show you an example in a minute. If there's a niche that currently is not being filled, but we know from other markets that they can work and we have reason to think it can work here, then we might add that event. So, for example, there was not a reliable Texas Independence Day celebration. I'm a fifth-generation Texan. I know Texas Independence Day really well. That's why, if I want to remember, we have an Independence Day proclamation during council. When I forget, I just don't talk about it. I'm the reason we started doing the Texas pledge, so you can thank me or condemn me for that. So we want to do a Texas Independence Day. We talked about fireworks and everything, and then it rained, so we went to Texas-style St. Patty's and it worked. It's a niche nobody else was doing. And then sometimes, we add them because people have told us they want us to do it. For example, we were approached by several members of the Mayor's Commission, Listen, Learn, Lead, saying, "You know, we've thought about it, and we think we want to have some kind of observance of Juneteenth." And originally, they actually... Their idea was Lewisville will do something on Friday night and Fire Mountain Highland Billups on Saturday, the other one on Sunday. So all three cities would have something. We did ours, and we will do ours again. So we added the concert on Friday night, and it turned out very well. But that was one that was started by residents. Now, events can be removed or reduced if either we're not getting any kind of traction, we're not getting any kind of attendance, and we don't feel like we can break into a market. For example, we started the Fall Fashion Fest. The idea was there were fashion trucks that were becoming very trendy. So instead of having a food truck event, have a fashion truck event and food trucks also. And we launched it, and we picked a time to have it, right before Thanksgiving weekend. They can get people to come here shop. They see Old Town, they come back to shop. And we didn't do quite the research we needed to to find there was another group starting a fashion truck show the same day, and they started a little bit earlier than we did. So we were calling vendors, and they loved the idea, but then they had a conflict. And we tried it for two years, even brought the chamber in to help with a taste up, made it a food and fashion fest. But we really weren't getting any traction. We weren't seeing any kind of demand for that event. And then the pandemic hit, and that was an opportunity to say, "You know what? We tried this for a couple of years. We're just going to move on." So we did. Sometimes, it's because the organizer changes plans. For example, the Cinco de Mayo we used to have. When the organizer of Cinco de Mayo decided not to do it anymore, we did not take that over. We said, "Okay, well, we enjoyed doing it, but Denton has a big one. We'll never compete with Denton. They're too big." Even though we've got a great demographic for that type of event, we haven't seen the traction for it, and we no longer have a person to run it, so we let it go. Or the KTA Jam Session, great event. Love that event. Fire Department went through the pandemic. They got hit harder than anybody because not only did they have all the struggles, they were doing all the work, right? With the injections and the testing sites and everything else. And so when it rolled time around to do the jam session, well, twenty, we couldn't because of the pandemic. Twenty-one, they said, "You know, we're still doing vaccine clinics. We're still buried. Plus, attendance has kind of lagged a little bit, and we're just running out of volunteers to do the work." So Waco took that over. So we took that off our calendar. And then Rocktober was a budget cut. So there are financial reasons, there's market reasons, there's volunteer reasons why an event might be removed. We'll go to the next slide. Oh, back up one real quick. I left the last bullet off. I want to make sure you say. With all of these expansions, we have to know if there's budget money available. Because remember, we're using hotel fund. Hotel fund is not infinite. It grows and shrinks. It hopefully grows more than it shrinks. Whether supporting departments can provide needed staff, that's a big one. We'll talk about Rocktober in a minute. I would love to bring Rocktober back. That is a big demand on park staff and public services staff when they're already having to, you know, really spin their wheels trying to keep up with their regular tasks. So that's one where we could find ways. We know there's a demand. We could find the budget money for the base event, but staffing is why this past year, it couldn't happen. And then also, whether there's an opportunity to reach audiences we're not currently reaching. We wouldn't want to just keep doing the same thing, reaching the same people over and over and over. That's just too limiting. Okay, there we go. So here's three possible expansions. These are short-term. These are things that in the next year or two, we might bring forward to look at. One is Western Days, and that is adding some activities to Western Days. One complaint I have in Western Days is there's not enough vendors that are selling stuff. We have so many sponsors now, and they all love their sponsor space. That takes a lot of vendor space. And then when we tried using vendors on the peripheral, the vendors selling stuff didn't like being so far away from the heart of the event. So we need to do something to try and do that, to give them some space. Also, once Main and Mill Losts open on the east side of Mill Street, we can extend the zone back out to Keeley like we did in the past, but actually use that space instead of just having that be an access point. So to fill some of those areas, to work on South Charles, to work on the east end of Main, would have some expense to it to make that happen. Well, also, there's the possibility, we've talked about it a few times. We've found a lot of obstacles, but it's still worth looking at again. When there are vacant spaces downtown or when there are event spaces that are not booked that day, maybe we put some kind of entertainment into those spaces, little small pockets. They can be acoustic, which brings your cost down. But an acoustic trio or a jazz band playing in one of those spaces two or three times during the festival is a nice addition. It's not hugely expensive. The challenge is we don't control the space, is why we haven't done it so far, but we can revisit that. Color Palooza, there's several things that staff would like to do with this. One of them is, we used to have more decor, but as we've added more activities, more interactive art, the decor has gone down a little bit. We'd like to boost that again. There's a couple of really great activities out there that we'd like to bring in that just doesn't fit the budget. And also, we are interested in bringing a couple of what we call cultural pods. This would be, for example, it might be the West Park Atlanta City Hall. We'd have an area that is set up dedicated to the Chin culture. Work with our Chin residents, our Chin community members to bring in entertainment and food and material vendors geared toward... That represent and reflect that community, to expose that community to the rest of Lewisville. And maybe one for Korean as well. We have some great connections there. And that's an interest we have, but there's a cost to that. We probably would pay somebody in that community to do a lot of the work, but there's costs. And then Sounds of Lewisville, very well established. We wouldn't want to go into August. And we wouldn't want to do two concerts in the same week every single week because staffing-wise, that would just be a killer. But we could add dates in May if there was an interest in that. It's not high on our list because we feel like Sounds already is reaching that audience. And May, you get into the school season. It might be tricky. But we could add a couple of dates at the end of May if Sounds of Lewisville were the direction we wanted to grow. New and returning events. There's Rocktober is the first one. And maybe if we go that path, we're trying to minimize the impact on staffing and on budget instead of bringing it back for the whole month of October with three or four series, we just bring the last one, just either on or close to Halloween. The year we had it on Halloween, the businesses in Old Town, they stayed open. They had trick-or-treating. They loved it. And that's one of the rare times, frankly, that they have been willing to stay open late for one of our events. They don't stay open late for Sounds, but they did for Rocktober. And so we have options there, full series or just a one-time. Native American Powwow. Let me click on that link for me, please. It should pop up. Can I use that request?
I've got this.
You know what? Just give it. I want to... You've seen the Native American dancers, the indigenous dancers at Western Days. Native American Powwow is much larger. It's usually a multi-day event. It has tribes from all over, especially Oklahoma and Arizona and New Mexico, but all over the area. There's not many tribes that are based in Texas, oddly enough, but there's reservations in a lot of adjacent states, and there's tribal communities. And they bring in twenty, thirty, forty, fifty groups that will participate. There's a Powwow at Trainers Village in Grand Prairie. And then AT&amp;T in downtown Dallas puts on one for their employees. They bring in... It's really more of their closed event, but they've been open to the public recently, and it's done pretty well. Both of those events are interested in a new space. And because we have connections with them and we have Bill Weaver Arena, both of those events are interested in perhaps combining and moving to Lewisville. It is a big-ticket item, but there is sponsorship already on the table. The organizers estimate right now they've got between forty and fifty committed, some from AT&amp;T, some from others, which would be about half the cost. So you can do the math there, around fifty thousand coming from us and fifty thousand from them. But they do a lot of the work. The really good thing is because it brings in tribal dancers from other states for a multi-day event, they got to stay somewhere, and we have hotels. So that's a possible. We did talk with the customer about a lawn, a lawn mower racing event. These are really cool. I would show you the video, but obviously, our links are not going to cooperate for me today. Put together a quick forty-seven-point slide deck if you want to go there. Okay. Can you pass this? It's a cool event.
It was me. It's mine.
It's not just a riding lawnmower. They have regular ones. They also have souped-up ones. They have various classes and categories. There are some in parts of Texas that are very popular. We think for a startup event, it'd be tough to just run the races and draw a crowd immediately. But if we wanted to go that way, we could do that and combine it with maybe a Market Days event at the arena, where you've got the, you know, people selling, kind of like Canton, but not nearly as big as Canton, in the grass area, and then you have the motorcycle races in the arena. We showed them the national organization. We showed them a site plan of our venue, and they said, "Yeah, we couldn't do the very high end, the biggest, fastest ones because you need a much larger space." But yeah, we could do races.
Combine races.
That's another possibility. Continuing on, Casey Cox, who does our PBR, is extremely interested in the PRCA Multi-Day Rodeo. He originally said May of twenty-three, and then when I met with him and said, "You know we can't do that," right? He said, "Yeah, I know you can't do that." Now we're talking twenty-four. I said, "We'll see." So he's interested in twenty-four, doing a multi-day PRCA at Bill Weaver. And then Listen, Learn, Lead, those same members that talked about the concert also have talked about possibly doing a Juneteenth rodeo. Now, if we did, maybe we could combine that with the Fiesta Chara and do them back-to-back. One day do the Chara, the next day do Juneteenth. So we're using the arena together for a multi-day event and minimizing the impact on those residents, not bringing so much traffic. There's always numbers. These are, in many ways, rough estimates. Some of them, we can quantify pretty closely. Some of those, a little bit of a ballpark until we actually get details in. But you can see forty, maybe as much as fifty for that Western Days to add those stretches on Charles and Main. Forty thousand for Color Palooza. That's both pods plus some decor and activities. Eight thousand per date for Sounds of Lewisville. I'm a little nervous about it. I normally would say ten, but because we already have eight dates already, there's some savings because the portals just stay there, and so we got some savings on that and some other things. But eight thousand, if we wanted to add a date. For the new events or returning events, Rocktober Full Series fifty-two, this is the number we actually developed for this past year's budget request. Twenty thousand if it's just the one night. The Powwow, there's a hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar figure, which is a scary number. They tell us they've got fifty already verbally committed. Until I see the check, I don't know that. But nevertheless, big-ticket item, lot of work. We need to get a lot of help. Uh, the lawnmower thirty thousand, the P R C A seventy-five, and the Juneteenth seventy-five. The reason this one here is the same as a three-day event is because this one, we're doing it all. Here, we're paying Casey Cox and he becomes a promoter and he goes out and gets sponsors and he takes care of a lot of the logistics and pays that. So we're paying him plus some stuff. Here, we're paying a group to come do the rodeo, but then we're doing everything else ourselves. That's why those numbers are the same, but for a different number of days. Uh, and then lastly, very important to note, our projection for, for hotel. So we were about two point four before the pandemic. We plummeted to one point four after the pandemic. Crawled up to one point nine. I think this year rejected two point one. Personally, I think we'll exceed that, probably two, 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 three, not back to the two, four, but we'll get there. We will get there. But what we're projecting right now cannot cover this. So I'm not here saying, this is what we're doing next year. I'm here saying, if you think about events as a possibility, these are options, but we can't do them all. It's very much prioritization. And finally, staffing demands, especially on parks and public services. If we, if we do these over here, it's adding to what we're doing now. The cost for those departments would not increase. Adding any new event and slightly adding a Sounds of Louisville concert will affect those departments. And if they can't absorb that cost, then we're going to need to include in the event budget money to pay outside services for some cleanups and street cleaners and so forth. And those numbers are not really in those figures. The other option is get privately run events. And this is actually something we've been working on for the past several years. Privately run events to come in and they do the event. We give them a fee and we, they keep the revenue, they, that's great. But we get the event with minimal staff or less staff impact. P B R is one of those. Uh, we pay Casey Cox, he works with P B R, he does the rodeo stuff. We just do the parade and the concerts and then we kind of manage the site for him. First Fridays, Main and Mill, technically, wouldn't call it a special event per se, it's more of a market, but it has the potential to be a special event. They want it to be. We're keeping hands off on that. They're doing all the work. We just provide them some very basic staff support. They can use our plugs for electricity. Something that we could, if it grows, we could sponsor it, but right now we just give them in-kind support. Best Little Brew Fest in Texas, Cloud Nine Charities does that. We pay them twenty thousand dollars. And they run everything. Uh, we do meet with them and kind, kind of give them off, uh, suggestions for how to build the event, but they run it. Shared Table, that's Main and Mill again. Bikers in Wonderland came this year in October. They were supposed to be at, uh, Grantscape. Grantscape double booked, so with about three weeks till the event date, they came to us and we got them here. It went well. There's some things we can do better. And we talked to the good organizer. He said, we want to come back. We loved it. And we told him the issues, like in the alley and stuff. He said, oh, we can fix that. We didn't know that, we'll take care of it. So they want to come back next year. And what's nice here is, we didn't give them anything except just some in-kind staff support. We didn't pay them a fee. They want their event. It's a fundraiser. They make money off of it. They actually, um, you know, are a client in that case. Korean Festival has been in Carrollton for a number of years. Hasn't been held since twenty nineteen. It's a wonderful event. Uh, the organizers didn't have one in twenty, didn't have one in twenty-one. In twenty-two, they wanted to start back up and they reached out to us and said, hey, we're losing some space over in Carrollton. Uh, we'd like to look at Louisville. And we had visits and meetings. They walked through the mall site. We were ready to go. We had a site plan and everything. And then we didn't hear back from them for a couple of months. The person that was supposed to finalize it went to Korea on business and was going to call as soon as she got back. And two months went by and we finally just crossed it off. It was too late. We couldn't possibly do it, even if they called. I think they will probably this next spring call us again. And if so, we'll talk to them about it. Um, they're going to want to ask something. We just don't know what, because they never gave us a proposal. But it's out there. You might hear talk about it. I think actually, uh, Mayor, I think one of them called you during that process. And then this is not really a special event and it's cool, and I want you to know about it. Texas Firefighter Summer Games will be back here in the summer of twenty-four. Uh, using Louisville venues, bringing firefighters from across the state for about nine days of competition. It's a lot of fun. Parks does quite a bit of work on this one. Uh, our event staff does some, especially on the tourism side, but they do most of the work themselves. And every time they're here, they love it so much, they say they want to be right back. Uh, well, one time we're going to be on a two or three-year rotation with them. And, um, well, then COVID hit, changed everything, but now they're coming back in twenty-four. The advantage of privately running events again is what I told you about, is that it's a, it's a potential revenue source for us. It doesn't have such an impact on our staff in any department. It brings in events we might not have thought of ourselves or know how to run. Like, I don't know how to run a rodeo, so having a rodeo guy run a rodeo makes sense. It can drive hotel stays. Korean Fest would drive some hotel stays. And then, um, finally, if we're working with them and their sponsors like the venue and like what we offer in Louisville and like the, the treatment they get, those sponsors might want to come on to sponsors of our events as well. So that is the end of my slides, number thirty-two, right there in front of you. And did we want to get input on?
Really, Counsel, I, I know a lot of you independently have come and said things to me about wanting to, different things about events. So I wanted to put this on an agenda to make sure, to see if there was a drive towards one direction on, on something. And, um, if there was more than just one council member who was interested in that.
One direction's kind of played out. I don't think we put that.
True, true. But I will say that, um, obviously with, with James's, uh, large caveats, you know, the, the, we didn't bring back some of the events this year because of staffing issues and budget issues. Um, I will say that, um, obviously we can't do all of those, as James said. But, and when we know the budget numbers, um, we can, you know, put together, you know, your, your budget and see if you guys approve it. But I would like to know if there's something that all of you are, you know, generally interested in this being a priority. I would want to know that so that I can kind of try to work towards that goal in the budget process.
Yeah, I can just kind of open it up to everybody, kind of give your, your input on where we are, where you maybe like this to be. Anything to add or change?
I'll, I'll jump, jump in first. The lawnmower thing, it is a lot of fun. You know, I, I did get the traction I was hoping to get. Still think it's a great idea, but it's, uh, maybe something we'll look at later. I was curious, so that did strike me as, as maybe a, a bigger, a bigger deal than that is that, last Veterans Day, I, I couldn't help notice all the veterans events that were happening in these neighboring, neighboring cities. We didn't have anything. And I didn't know if there's an opportunity to, one, if that was, there's a reason for that, because maybe, maybe it's already been thought about, there's reasons for not having one. Or two, um, could it be combined with the last Rocktober? You know, move that into November and actually do something that's a combination of Veterans Day and musical event.
So to, to that point, Steve Southwell's thing has been the thing for twelve years probably now. And it gets the same six to twelve people with basics.
This is what he does on social media.
Yeah, yeah, here in front of you. And I've, I've been to all the, maybe one or two. And it's, it's a great, small community event, but you're right, it's not city sponsored, it's not, it's not anything like that.
Yeah, the Colony has a Veterans Festival that has done pretty well. Hasn't grown as much as they want, but it's got a good, solid base. We, there's no reason for, no, I'm a veteran, so I'm not going to ever pay on veterans, because, you know, that would be bad. I'd have to see counseling for that. But, uh, we just, at the time, we were putting our festival lineup together, that just doesn't figure into it. And now there's competition out there, so it's not at the top of our list. But there's, there's ways.
Can you talk about the school districts Veterans Day and how that works?
A lot of times, M L K's a great opportunity of this also. The school district does a great M L K recognition. So rather than going and doing our own and competing with them, we support theirs. Uh, we talked with our Chin reps about doing something for Chin Day. Uh, but the school already does a great one, so instead we support them. They do a really good Veterans Day breakfast and, and, uh, assembly at the high school. And if you haven't gone, you should. They invited me and I went, I'm like, wow, that's impressive. So we would want to make sure if we did something, we didn't take away from what they're already doing and, and, you know, kind of be the, the big bad guy taking away their nice event. Uh, instead, we try to support them. So if we did something for Veterans Day, you probably would either want to do it on a different day or a different time of day, so that we didn't conflict with the school district.
Can you, uh, expound on, when you say we support them, is it, I mean, do we do any marketing for them? Do we do any, anything on social media or anything like that?
We share their social media information. Uh, we include it in our calendars, so it's on our website calendars. With M L K, we have been a, a low-level cash sponsor in the past. I think it's a thousand bucks. It's not a whole lot, but we pay for something and we let them display their, uh, contest winners at the art center for an extended period of time. For Chin, it's showing up for things. Uh, they really wanted people to be there, so police, fire, elected, uh, staff show up for it and participate, and that's all they've ever asked for. And, uh, for Veterans Day, it's pretty much the same thing. They like us to let our employees know about it, so that our employees can go if they are veterans or if they just want to, but especially veterans. And we share that information on social media, let people know, if you want to observe Veterans Day, here's your opportunity.
Here's just my comment. I, uh, the Rocktober thing, I remember that happened several, it seemed like every time we had that, we had rain. Lot of events, but I think the best thing that came out of that was when you had that mummy band.
Yes.
How it was so good.
The mummies.
And there was another band, I think maybe the next year that was, but I think a one-day thing inside the Louisville Grand Theater might be the way to go. While not conflicting, I know with the, um, deal that the Louisville Grand Theater is doing with, with their deal.
Anything in the Grand Theater takes some of our staffing costs down because, and our, some of our logistics costs. It is sometimes difficult to connect that with mainstream. And so we'd like to try and, and do that, but it's, it's an option.
You know, they got the Rocky Horror Picture thing going on right now. Looks like that's grown. Growing up in the Scouts, obviously, we grew, grew up with the Powwow thing, so that's, that's a huge cause, but I certainly know a, a, a little bit about that. So that's exciting, but looks like has some, some cause to it, but.
I love the American Powwow thing, because I'm looking at fifty percent of that basically. In the Halloween event, I think that would be awesome. In the P R C A rodeo.
So I, I'm not opposed to any of it. Understanding we can't do it all, what, what's in my mind is just thinking about, I like, I think the, the Powwow sounds amazing, but when is that?
It is in November.
So there's like this, I always feel so bad for, for the staff, like, uh, September and October. I mean, between a P B R, um, you know, and the parade we have for that, and then Western Days the following week. And then Homecoming Parade, which comes through here, and that's, that's a big mess.
In a good way, though, in a good way.
It's a good mess.
She needs it.
It is a good mess.
What I mean is that there's a whole lot of candy that's everywhere. Like, you, you walk through, oh, you walk the dog the next morning and there's candy everywhere. Um, so, you know, that, somebody has to clean that up and, you know.
Is your puffer doing that?
No. She tries. Anyway, I, you know, there's, it's, I've, I've actually kind of overheard staff talking about, oh, well, how many hours of overtime did you put in last week? And just the amount of hours they're putting in within that short window of time. I always, I just, I'm very hesitant to put something else so close to those, like this little cluster that we have.
Does it have to be in November? Is there like?
That's when they have.
Some national declaration that the Powwow has to take?
It is near, during Indigenous Americans Month.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean. That makes sense.
That's my only, that's my only worry about Powwow is that, you know, it's, when is, okay, so in October, when is the Homecoming Parade? Usually towards the end, right?
It moves around. Usually it's been one of the first two weeks in October, but it moves around.
Okay.
Depends on who they're playing.
Okay. Well, I, yeah, and so like, so September, like the last two weekends of September are like back to back.
Yes.
Literally.
We try to get P B R to move up a week, so we'd have a week in between, they'd have something else that, their, the second week of September. So we're pretty well locked into that third week of September. There actually will be a gap next year, because Western Days is twenty-nine thirty, it's at the end of the month.
So, I mean, I've, if we could find a way to make it work without just completely burning staff out. You know, I, I would, I would love to see that, but.
On the Powwow, how, what is the impact on staff, do you think?
The biggest effect there would be traffic.
It's traffic.
Just like we do at the P B R, you'd have to shut down some of those streets in that neighborhood, control access. That means putting barricades out. It means staffing some of them. It means taking the barricades down when we're done, and Keith can probably be more detailed than I am in that process, but it's, it's a lot of staff work. Especially if we use the concrete blocks, which we did use them for one of the main entrances. Parks has some site work, but we've been paying cleanup crews, so that's a big chunk of the Parks, uh, the part and process on those. I think your biggest impact would be that and also P D. Uh, whenever we start closing streets, P D has to respond to it.
So, I'm just looking at the, at the cost over there, we're closing, you know, we're not quite at half a million, but we're getting close. I would say right now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that for right now. I mean, if, if opportunities come up, if sponsorships come up, then we can think about that. Um, I would think more expanding within what we have. The one thing that you said, and I think, uh, Claire and I talked about this too, like the, the buildings that we have that are occupied, that we can get, like, during something, if we can get something in there to kind of create a different experience. It does two things, I think. It gives people inside buildings that we haven't been in, hopefully they're safe and everything, but it gets them inside, it gets them inside those buildings. And people's imagination for economic development, like, oh, this would make a great whatever shop and somebody will come, come occupy that space. But I think it's something, I'm more of a jazz person, I'm, I'm, unfortunately, I'm not a Western Days guy, but I mean, dear, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in different types of music. I'm listening to Frank Sinatra, to Billy Goodman, so I'm all over the place. But, and I, you know, every, every now and again, there are a couple of Western songs I like. But just some, something that creates an experience within what we already have. To kind of expand that experience, so it doesn't create more staff time.
Over the left side of the slide as opposed to.
And that's the counting me. I'm just looking at eighty-eight grand, like, that seems a little more new.
That, that's actually, I, I would like that clarification too, is, are you, is your priority going to be event expansion versus event addition, like Brandon said? Or are you really wanting to focus on one of those? It sounds right now like so far, people have been talking, there've been three people who have mentioned the Powwow. So.
I think culturally, yeah. As far as culture goes, I can talk right now, tongue tied. And the educational aspect, and they are, they're the, the roots of this entire country. That it, if they're looking at combining that and going somewhere, wherever they go, they're going to stay. So it's not a thing, you, you either jump on the, the train or it's going to leave you. It's going to go on. And I don't look at it at a hundred and five thousand, because basically if they have fifty, we're talking fifty-five thousand. So as far as, if I had to, if I had to pick one thing out of the addition, it would be the, um, Native American Powwow, because that would be freaking awesome to have that in Louisville, because wherever they go, they're going to stay. It's not like we're going to be able to go back the next year and go, eh, you know, this is a good idea to promote.
Yeah, just reminder on the numbers. And the one oh five is a pretty sound number. Um, but keep in mind, if we're having to hire, and I don't know if there are companies that do it, that can come set up and man barricades, there must be. If we're having to hire somebody like that, that number's not in. So there could be some increases based on staffing issues. I wouldn't think they'd be massive increases, but.
I would say I'm, I'm more interested on the, the expansion. The one over here on the addition that I, I, I think it's a pretty cool opportunity for the Powwow. It's something that I agree with Ronnie. It's like, it's, it's probably going to present itself once and we either take it or it's, it's over. And I think it's just different. And then anything else that we have or that really that anybody around here has, I think would be just a really, really amazing event to have here if we could get it.
I could see that, I see kids from the school district, I mean, they're studying it that month. And it's just a broadening experience. Instead of let's just go have a beer and eat some nachos.
The one thing that I hear, the one thing that I hear all the time is, when are we going to have Rocktober again? So I, I do think at least, I think this, the Rocktober signal Halloween event would be good. But I do like the idea of the. That, that is, yeah, I think, I agree with Ronnie that, you know, it's something, it's definitely different from anything, from anything that we've done. I mean, we have some of it during the Western Days, but.
I think the Western Days programming, the Color Palooza programming expansion, it, it makes a lot of sense. I'm not sure Sounds of Louisville in May would, would work with, you know, with, uh, you know, Memorial Day and having to start and stop. I think everybody likes June and July and, and. I think you're, I mean, just adding in May, to me, wouldn't, wouldn't work that well.
So if I have to prioritize, is it the expansion first or one of the new events?
I'm going to put my two cents in.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, of course.
Well, I mean, I don't get to vote, so it doesn't matter. And there's no voting back here. I would love to see us get to a three-day event. I think those are considered, when we talk about all the events I compete against, all the ones that, unless it's Kaboom Town, all those other ones, I think, are three days. And that's kind of the difference between a top-tier Metroplex event and a, not top-tier, Metroplex event. So I, I would love to see us get to a three-day event, whether that's Western Days, Color Palooza, I don't know. They both have some merit. I don't think they both can do it, I think one of them does it, I'm not sure which one. So for me, I'm leaning on the event expansion part. I grew up with Pow Wows on the weekends. I went to them regularly, I mean, they're, they're amazing. And if there's an opportunity for a third-party vendor to do that, and there's not a full-blown, I have zero interest in a full-blown, new, staff-supported event.
Right.
I agree.
Agreed.
I, I don't think we have the bandwidth to take that on right now, that's, that's my, but if I can get something that's, I can contract out, or I can, then, then there's, there's something there. And of course, the one thing everybody missed, and I knew they would, is that single Halloween event gives me one more opportunity to wear my Star Trek uniform, so I'm totally right there.
That's a no.
Well, you know the Halloween event is gonna be very well-attended.
Potentially. I mean, obviously, weather would hurt, it is actually on Halloween night.
Halloween night, yeah.
But the time we had it, it was well-attended.
So Rocktober kind of sits in that middle space for me of, if people like it, like Bob said, people like the concerts, but it, it does, it gets impacted a lot more by weather.
People just invest in a roof over the Main Street core, we can do lots of.
Or a giant theater away.
A lot of giant theater, it's a very high theater.
No, when, when, aren't we exploring and investing?
That's not on today's, yeah.
Squirrel!
Throw something at them.
Squirrel!
All right, that's, that's my two cents on all that.
I would say if there's, if there's anything to explore, maybe the Pow Wow, because it does have some hotel stays, it brings in different groups, so I could see, see that. But I would lean toward more of the event expansion. If we're gonna explore one, that would be the one to see economically. It makes sense to see if we can pull it off and not kill our staff.
Is that?
I think, I think if you're gonna get to a Main Street Days kind of thing, you know, a lot of people just, like, a lot of people just like to go to Friday night, Main Street Days, because it's, you know, they got certain bands there and they got a wine experience. I think expanding the Western, essentially, to three days would be probably top of my list.
We definitely in the next year will not be expanding Western Days to three days, just from a staffing.
No, not in the next year.
Okay, just making sure you know.
But I'm saying that in the future, that seems like that would be, if we want to get, like Mayor said, if we want to get the Main Street.
That Pow Wow looks better and better, doesn't it? Contract that sucker out.
And the difference, I think the one thing between the Main Street Days, they've had some problems in the last couple of years with, like, people getting in and out. But they have just kind of a straight shot. We have Charles Street, we have Bent, we have Johnson Feed, we have Mill, we're gonna have Mill Street. So it's a little bit more of a, how, how do we, I guess, get those businesses involved? Because, I mean, the Main Street corridor stuff gets hit, but like, they don't even go into the theater. So we gotta figure out a way, if we're gonna do that, how do we get those businesses involved? They don't want to do it, but I'm sure right now, some of them will tell you, eh, no, it's not really open, so.
Okay, so my, my, my understanding is that if we can make it work financially, if we can make it work staffing-wise, which are big ifs, but the priority right now is to expand the Western Days and Color Palooza programming. And then if we're adding something, it's looking at Pow Wow. Okay.
The lawnmower racing has a very close.
Neck and neck.
Just, just to cut off a little bit.
Bring your own lawnmower race. I should, I should.
I have some ex-in-laws that would come and.
Patrick? Patrick, with you, I can pick up a couple of antique lawnmowers I'll drag racing.
Drag right down the end. If we can do it.
Well, I'm thinking that if you could do this part of the rodeo, it'd be fantastic.
If you could do it on the medians and park spaces, that'll save cars. Every two weeks.
I, I think you own something, Patrick, I think we, we can get some go-kart, go-carts, I'll get in there.
You know, we are gonna have that facility in the northern gateway.
I think that's all we have for workshop today. We'll go ahead and close this out, we need to close out the regular meeting. Are we there? All right. As there is no other action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we are adjourned. Eight forty-five, forty-six PM.